We'll give a couple of minutes for John Mazza to join, so just a minute. Okay, we'll be starting in just a minute. Evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission. It's a special meeting timing tonight, Monday, May 21st, starting at 5:30. So could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings, Commissioner Mazza, Commissioner Pearson,
Here.
Vice Chair Euring,
Here.
Chair Marks,
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for that. Could we have approval of the agenda, please?
I move that we approve agendas. Staff recommends with item 4A and 4B, move to June 4th and 4D to a date uncertain.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carried, next, can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on May 11th, 2018.
Thank you. And any ceremony today? No? No, pass? Okay. Let's see. So any commissioners like to speak anything not on the agenda? Well, actually, sorry. Any written comments from the public today? Great. Oh, this is for item 2A?
That is.
Oh, that is this? Okay. Great. So we have Marianne Riggins. You have three minutes.
I know this item's at the end of the agenda, and unfortunately, there's just no way I can make it to that late, so I wanted to speak now. Regarding the Cliffside project, I just wanted to speak in favor of it. Mr. Cartazzo has been a longstanding member of the community, and on Cliffside, his family has been there for decades. And I think that it, anything that he builds there, and this particular project, is going to be a good one. And I hope that you will find favor with it, and you're able to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you as well. So I'll close out the open public comments. Next up, any commissioner comments? Commissioner Jennings?
Yeah, like I mentioned to Bonnie earlier, the Surfside News had this reported that this meeting was supposed to start at 6:30, and so it's not our responsibility to make sure that they get that correct, but when we change the practice, you kind of need to beat them over the head with the fact that there's a change, so.
We will definitely make sure to get the paper to pay attention to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza, anything?
I forget why this meeting was at 5:30.
The meeting was at 5:30 because when we were doing the public hearing notices a month ago, it looked like we were going to have several additional items that would be heard tonight that would benefit from you having plenty of time to get through them all. A couple of those have dropped off, so that, that's the reason things evolve sometimes between the month in advance noticing and the actual meeting date. So, sorry, it's not as packed as it might have been.
Oh, I'm so upset. Is there a plan to do other early meetings?
The next couple, we just have at the regular time. We haven't.
So they'll be packed? I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Yeah, no other, we don't have any forecasted right now.
Okay. And as far, I think we've gone through this, as far as I'm concerned, I know it may not be the same for other commissioners, but 5:30 works fine for me, generally, so.
Yeah, I still have problems with it. All right. So then I did have a couple of questions. I know I caught up a little bit with Trevor offline, but in last, our last session, there were some questions just about kind of procedures. There was, I got some clarification kind of in what, judicial versus legislative, quasi-legislative. I just wanted to kind of get a, kind of a show of hands up from us. Does it, is it worth kind of having a little more formal discussion on that, either as public comment, or maybe some separate training session, just so there's more clarity on kind of what hands off where?
Yeah, maybe before we do that, you know, it was, we sort of did have this friendly conversation discussing why our comments, brilliant comments we get from Jeff and everybody else, could sort of send in the appendix. Have you guys thought about it anymore? I mean, is there any more thoughts you guys have had on that topic? Bonnie, Trevor?
I'm not sure I understand what your question is, but I mean.
Well, I mean, the question, at least the perspective of the last meeting was, you know, we're providing these, we are an advisory body, right? Okay. And what we, I learned at the last meeting that our vice is being screened by persons or persons unknown, okay, who then filter what we, how it goes to the city council. And it was, that was news to me. That was, I did not expect that to happen. So I was just wondering after, I mean, I thought about it a lot, and I'm just wondering if you guys had any other comments?
Yep. Bonnie and I have spoken about this, and I think it's important that, you know, there's a full, there's a renewed focus in the staff reports to the city council that bring out the planning commission's discussion on this, and make sure that the points in the recommendation you made are fully discussed, and the departures from it.
I don't know what that means. I don't know what you just said.
Basically, that there's more discussion in the staff report about the transpirings at the planning commission. I think it's, I think it, there was, it made loud and clear that the planning commission felt that its voice wasn't coming through strong enough in the reports to the city council.
So when we ramble, they're trying to decipher what you meant?
It wasn't really rambling. I mean, there were, there were some fairly definitive statements. And that's, okay, I'll take, that's a step in the right direction, small step, okay, but in the right direction. And I just, I think, back to your comment, Chris, I think it is something we, we should talk about, right? That's, this is, you know, one man's perspective is, there's five of us up here who speak to members of our community. That's what we do. I mean, that's what I do. I go out and do site visits. I talk, I mean, I've stood in front of supermarkets, pitching stuff, okay? So I've got some perspective or some insight in terms of what people are thinking. I could be wrong, okay? You know, that's happened occasionally, and I'm willing to live with that, but I do believe that having our voice be clearly heard by the city council benefits everybody. We may think of things that they haven't thought about, so even though they come down and say, this is what I want to do, there may be something good that we come up with that can really enhance what they're trying to do. And, you know, my concern was, I just want to make sure that gets heard.
Absolutely. And you guys do have expertise. I know how seriously you take this job, and you put in the time to speak with people, and to go out and do the legwork, to come up with ideas, and, you know, really dig in on these issues. So I hope going forward that you feel that your voice is better heard in the city council.
Do what you can for us. Thank you.
I think it has to work the other direction also. I hear that, what I heard last meeting was staff does what the city council wants them to do. But I saw in some of those things, a lot of things, I went back in the city council hearing, there were a lot of things in there that weren't in the city council hearing. So it's either staff's deciding, or somebody on the council's going to staff on the side and saying, that's what I want to do, which is not allowed. So we need to discuss what gets told to us, or how the staff report is written, based on what the city council says, not their opinion of what the city council says.
I want to also make the point that, and I, it's been, it's been brought up before, that the, the staff works for the city manager, and the city manager reports to the city council. The staff, it's our job to basically pass information among the different people involved in these projects and decisions and things like that. You all interface with the public, we interface with the public, we are the professional staff, that, I'm not saying that, you know, being a, having a planning, planning degree supersedes your, all of your own personal experience, living and working, and being citizens of Malibu, but that is a role that we have too. And so it is a distinct role, and, and we have a neutral position on projects and, and things like that in terms of code compliance. And then with respect to code amendments, we have an opinion too. And so what we have to do is balance, you know, what our opinion is, and what your opinion is, and make sure all of that gets heard. Because they don't, they're not always the same.
What do you think our?
And, and our opinion is not always the same as the council, although they're.
What do you think our role is? If you had to find the role of the plant, what is our role?
Let me ask one favor. So should we have a calendared item on this? Because I mean, I'm just, since this is a special meeting, we can't set something for the calendar, but staff can come back and make some suggestions at the next meeting. I mean, I think we're already having a pretty good conversation. And in my book, and I'm just going to kind of paraphrase what I'm thinking, is that there are, there are, you know, meetings, there are communications, there's a resolution, there's a staff report, just to understand how each is used in the different types of legislation. And I learned a little bit more from you on that, so I'd want to focus on the tools and how they're used, and then just so we better understand that. So that, that's where kind of my head is, but.
Okay.
So do we have, can we have kind of an informal vote, all in favor of a?
Well, we can't take an action since it's a special meeting.
We'll get that back.
It's not on the agenda, but we can, we'll come back next, next time, staff can come back with some options for you guys to put something on the calendar.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Why is this a special meeting? It's because of the hours?
Because it was set early, and it was, it was noticed as a special meeting, not as a regular meeting.
But it would have been a regular meeting if you had no notice, and it was at 6:30?
If what?
When we established the calendar for meetings, we picked this date. So it would have been a regular meeting, except that.
It was agendized, and it was noticed as a special meeting.
Okay.
Great, thank you. So I think that's it. And then as far as staff?
I just wanted to make a few comments. First, as mentioned at the last meeting, the SEQA initial study for the Earth Friendly Management Plan is currently circulating, and the deadline for submitting comments is, I believe it's June 4th, or thereabouts. You can find the document on our website. I also wanted to make the commission aware that, let's see, at the next city council meeting on, it'll be on Tuesday, May 29th, because of the Memorial Day holiday next Monday. So on the 29th, staff has, is requesting that city council initiate two different ordinances. One is kind of a technical ordinance related to when a property owner owns two adjacent pieces of property, and there are legal reasons why somebody can't grant an easement to himself, so we're proposing an ordinance that will help address that through the use of a covenant. And then also, we're going to be bringing forward, we hope to bring forward, some recommendations to tweak the parking lot safety standards, kind of informally known as the Ballard Ordinance. As we've been doing outreach with property owners, they're having some significant challenges implementing some of the things, and I think we can make some minor changes that will help facilitate better participation in, in that ordinance. So that's happening on the 29th. We're also going to be asking the city council for direction on an ordinance they had already initiated for zoning text amendment and local coastal program amendment for making part, parking lots a permitted use under the zoning code. So we're asking for a little more direction from them on that. All of these items would come to ZERACIS, and then ultimately to the planning commission, through the usual process. And then, let's see, one other thing. The, this is tentative at this point, but we're looking at July 9th for bringing the short-term rental ordinance to the city council. But that'll get fully noticed and everything. And I believe that are, those are all my comments.
So the ZTA to change the parking lot definition is coming back to us?
Yes, ultimately, that would come back to you.
Is the dark sky ordinance going to be read again next, or is it done?
Yes.
It's not done.
The second reading will happen on Tuesday as well.
Great. Thank you very much. We have next up the consent calendars. Anyone want to pull anything?
I want to pull 3B2.
Okay, motion to otherwise approve?
I move acceptance of 3B1.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, that moves, so let's go to 3B2. That item is Administrative Coastal Development Permit Number 17-103, in application to abandon the existing failed onsite wastewater treatment system and install a new alternative onsite wastewater treatment system. Do we need a staff report on this?
I don't. No, I don't.
Yeah, I didn't think so. Okay. So we'll go ahead and skip the staff report. Any public comment? Okay, we'll close that. So go ahead.
In the biology section, there's a statement that says, if there are native trees, somebody has to do something else. Have you looked at, do we know what the answer to that is?
Yeah, I performed a site visit out there. There are no native trees present.
Cool.
Okay. And my question is, from my reading of this, I think it was two years ago, they did this. And apparently it was done when they had a permit for an OTS, OWTS, not an AOWTS. My question is, did somebody on the site just say, go ahead and do this, and we'll get a permit later? Or they went ahead and did it, and then waited two years to get the permit? And the next question would, why didn't they get an emergency permit?
I'm not sure why they didn't get an emergency permit. I guess they were able to, the original intent was just to replace a like-for-like tank, which they wouldn't have to have gotten an ACDP subject only from the planning commission. They could have just gotten a building permit. However, the applicant and the contractor had some sort of miscommunication. The contractor onsite went ahead and also installed additional components, which essentially upgraded the system, which then required an ACDP from the planning department. I believe it was not caught, but I believe it was noticed by one of the, the building inspectors when they went out to do a final inspection on it, that more of the scope of work had expanded. So he told them he had to come in and get a ACDP for it.
But if an inspector comes out and finds something without a permit, he just allows it to be completed, and then two years later, you get the permit?
I think it was completed before we were aware of it.
Okay, thank you. I, I move.
I did just have one other quick question.
Okay.
For item 12, in the write-up, it says shall not commence, but I mean, it's already done. Just no big deal, or, you know, should we change that language? It's on page four of nine in the document.
I don't know if the language needs to be changed. I guess I'd ask Trevor.
Page four of nine. So it's item number 12.
It's the standard expiration condition.
Yeah, I just figured to John's point, it's, it works done. You know, do we change it? I'm, I don't care either way. I just noticed it.
I don't think it would harm that it remains. I don't think we need to remove it. Yeah, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
I, I move acceptance of item 3B2.
We don't need a motion. Just the chair can.
Thank you. Okay, so that's that. Next up, we've got.
4A is continued.
Item 4A continued, item 4B continued. So we're on to item 4C. It is coastal development permit number 15-058, lot merger number 15-004, variance number 17-001, minor modification number 17-002, and demolition permit number 17-027, an application for a lot merger and construction of a new swimming pool, spa, and associated developments. This has been continued from April 16th. Can we get a staff report?
Good evening, Chair Marks and members of the planning commission. The two subject properties are located on Lost Flores Mesa Drive in eastern Malibu. Lost Flores Mesa, Creek Park is to the west of the project site, and PCH is to the south. 21070 Lost Flores Mesa Drive is identified as Lot A, and, and 21100 Lost Flores Mesa Drive is Lot B. Here's Lost Flores Mesa Drive, right here. The applicant for the project owns both lots. Both properties contain steep slopes that descend from Lost Flores Mesa Drive at the front of the lots towards the rear of the lots. Lot A is developed with a legal, non-conforming, single-family residence that was approved by the California Coastal Commission. The property contains a 20-foot-wide driveway along the rear of the property here. A residence on Lot B was destroyed by a wildfire in 1993. The site contains remnants of the foundation, walls, and railroad tie stairs that descended the lower part of the property. The irregular shape and steep slopes of the lot result in a small developable area outside of the required setbacks. As shown in the slope analysis, the site contains slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1, which is shown in orange. The flat areas, which are shown in yellow and green, are in the location of the residence on Lot A, the burnt-out foundation from the previous residence on Lot B, the front yard setbacks here, the driveway easement, and the lowest part of the site in green. The surrounding neighborhood is developed with single-family residences on varying lot sizes. The proposed project involves a lot merger to join two legal adjacent lots, and the lot line that's proposed to be removed is shown in a red dash right here. Construction of a swimming pool, spa, patio, a 10-foot-high trellis, and an 18-foot-high deck, stairs on grade leading to the lower part of the site, a DG patio, and a grass creek area to the bottom of the property are proposed. And here's the, the path going down to the bottom of the site, the grass creek area here. The project meets the definition of a hillside residential development, so additional regulations require a 25% reduction in TDSF that would otherwise be allowed, a maximum absolute height of 35 feet from the lowest point to the highest point of the structure. No TDSF is proposed as part of the project, and as shown in the story pole plan, the height of the lowest point of the project, which is at the natural grade at the column of the deck, to the highest point, which is the top of the uncovered trellis, is 33 feet, 7 inches, and meets that hillside development standard requirement. A variance is requested to allow development on slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1, which is the area shown in orange. The applicant is also requesting to reduce the side yard setback by 4 feet, 6 inches, to allow the swimming pool to extend closer to the north property line. So here's the north property line. Here's the edge of the swimming pool. Here's the required setback in blue, and the reduced setback in orange. The spa is also within the setback area, but it is considered an understructure, or underground structure, and only needs to be 5 feet from the property line. The swimming pool does not meet the definition of an underground structure because the infinity edge on this side results in, in a great, height greater than 2.5 feet. The demolition plan shows the removal of all walls, walkways, stairs, and foundations to be removed. It's all shown in gray. Here's a photo from the site taken from Lost Flores Mesa Drive. Story poles are installed in this site, but as you can see, no story poles are visible from this perspective. This photo is taken from the driveway at the, the back of the lot. This is the existing single-family residence, and the walls, the existing railroad ties. Lost Flores Mesa Drive is on the other side of this wall here. These story poles depict the 18-foot-high These story poles depict the 18-foot-high deck, here, and the 10-foot-high trellis up at the top of the property. These story poles show the 10-foot-high trellis at the top of the property. Here's the single-family residence and Lost Flores Mesa Drive on the other side of this wall. In July 2017, story poles were installed showing the proposed footprint and height of the structures. As shown on the photo on the left, at the time the applicant was requesting a site plan review, because the deck was proposed to be 24 feet high, and a minor modification for the rear yard setback, because the deck was proposed to encroach into the rear yard setback. In response to neighbor opposition, the applicant revised the plans to reduce the height of the deck, as shown on the photo to the right. The revised project is outside of the rear yard setback and is 18 feet in height, and the SPR and the minor modification were eliminated. Here are additional story pole photos showing a comparison of the July 2017 proposed project and the current project. Another perspective of the story poles from July and from December. This photo is taken from Lost Flores Creek Park. The single-family residence is here, this is the wall that is right behind Lost Flores Mesa Drive, and as you can see, the trellis, story poles are barely visible, and the deck is not visible at all because it's screened by existing vegetation. There are multiple pieces of correspondence from several neighbors opposing the project. For various reasons, they object to the proposed grasscrete to be used for parking, noise generating commercial uses, and potential driveway blockage during construction, blocking, well, let's see here, potential noise generated from the pool equipment and pool, and impacts to slope stability. And all of those pieces of correspondence are included in your agenda report packet. With that, staff recommends approval of CDP number 1558, lot merger number 15004, variance number 17001, minor modification number 17002, and demolition permit number 17027. That concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have disclosures?
Yes, I visited the site with Commissioner Pearson. We met with the applicant, looked at both properties, and got a perspective of what they're trying to do up there. Nothing that wasn't covered in the staff report.
Prior to the last scheduled meeting on this item, I met with the architect and reviewed the plans versus what's on the ground. I did not learn anything new.
I visited the property over the weekend to get a sense of the project. Just one observation, when we look at just a couple things. In the presentation here, if you can go back like two slides, I think it is, the photo, one more of that one. The photo from, there we go, the photo from the park, if I'm getting my perspective right, is shot from like the front edge of the park, kind of nearest to the road, as you can see there. The park goes back another 40 yards or so, you know, like the little swings and stuff are there for the kids. If you stand back there, you can see the pool as well. So, you know, you get more perspective standing back. So as far as view from the park, there will be visibility pretty much, almost, into the pool if they're at the infinity edge. So, just an observation, in terms of what was written up in the staff report, said there's no visibility of anything but the top of the trellis, but from the park, there's more accessible. So that was it.
As Vice Chair Euring said, we visited the site previously, and I did not learn anything that's not in the staff report.
Great, do we have any questions of staff?
Go back to your last slide before the recommendation of what we should do. They list, okay, did you, if you go down that list, do you think any of those things are valid?
Valid from what perspective?
Valid from the perspective of, you know, I mean, have we done anything? Those are complaints from neighbors, I take it, right?
Yes, I can go down the list and...
Just, I mean, are you happy we've, some mitigation or something's been taken care of to address all those things?
Well, the...
Thank you, we...
We're just, I'm just trying to learn enough, so when you speak, I know more.
As far as parking on the grasscrete, the property owner is allowed to use his, a flat area on his property for parking, if he wishes to. So, we don't see that as a planning issue. As far as complaints of noise generating activity, there was code enforcement staff who did inspect the site. There was also, there are also complaints of a potential unpermitted roof deck on the site, which was determined to actually be legal. We did find permits for that. The issue from neighbors was that the property owner was having gatherings on his property that were loud, so that was an issue. From what I understand, we haven't received any complaints recently. I don't know if the proposed project would result in increased noise or not, but we do have noise ordinance standards and special event permit standards that would restrict noise and large parties, as well as the ability to have commercial events onsite. The applicant did say that none of the events that they have onsite are commercial, they're personal parties. As far as blocking the driveway during construction, the, we do have a condition of approval in the resolution that would require a traffic management plan to ensure that the driveway would not be blocked. The applicant, as well as all the neighbors who have the rights to the driveway on the rear of their property, would be required to continue to have access to their properties. The applicant would not be allowed to block the driveway. Potential noise generated from pool equipment and the pool are, those are, I think, typical in residential areas. The same noise buffering conditions that we apply to every residence would apply in this case. And geotechnical report was performed for slope stability, and the city geotechnical staff reviewed the project and determined that the project would not result in any geotechnical impacts.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to also just add that the pool equipment's going to be enclosed underneath the deck with a solid enclosure, so that should mitigate some of the issue.
Commissioner Maza, anything? I did have a couple questions as well. One just thought is if we had numbers, I think it would help to, slide numbers on the bottom, because it's like, wait, the one before, so that would help. Can you go to, I think, the third slide in the deck? Because there was, when you mentioned the driveway location, I just want to, because I'm visiting the property, I had a little different picture in my head. Next one, that one. So, if you go back, so here, you stated the driveway access. Is that for the lot which is going to have the pool on it, or for the existing residence? Because the residence, I thought, had the driveway on Lost Flores, whereas the legacy residence that burned seemed to have access from, what you highlighted is the driveway. Do both have access from that driveway?
Well, they, the property currently takes access from the front of the property on Lost Flores Mesa Drive, so there is a driveway back here. There's a chain link fence that, and there's really no, just the way that the lot is configured, there's, you can walk from this driveway into the subject property, specifically, well, this lower property here, but, or, I'm sorry, the property to the upper part of the slide, but, but there is a chain link fence here. This driveway is for access for the properties to the south of the subject properties, so the property is located here.
So I guess just to repeat then, so when we say that driveway, like, does the, both of these properties have rights that easement?
Yes, I believe they, it is on the subject properties.
Okay. Okay, and then do we know historically if the kind of pool, the property, where the pool will be, has that in the past, did they used to park down at the bottom or up at the top? I'm just wondering, like, will this impact the historic, you know, parking or driving patterns there?
It, just based on looking at existing conditions, I don't see why it would make sense for the property historically to have used that bottom area for parking. There's, there's a railroad tie stairs that lead down there, it doesn't, and there's a lot of overgrown vegetation, so I'm not sure how parking could have been accommodated there, under existing conditions.
Okay, and then, next one is about the deck, that 18-foot deck. If you can just go forward to those slides, I just want to make sure that, some clarifications there. I think it's, there's one where I think the story poles would probably make it easiest. That, like, this one should be fine. So, the measurement of the 33 feet is from the bottom of that 18-foot post, I assume, to the top of the 10-foot trellis?
That's right.
Then the scope of work also includes grading down to the grade of the road at the farthest kind of, the corner nearest to the photographer in this photo? So does that, that grading does not factor into that height calculation?
No, the height calculation is just for structures.
For structures, okay. And the last one on that then, for the 18-foot height, what is it, like a 14-foot deck and a 4-foot wall on top of that? Sorry, the deck would be 14-foot off grade, and then a 4-foot wall on top, something to that effect?
Oh, oh, right, there is a railing, a safety railing on top, so the flagging here shows the base of the deck, and the higher story pole shows the railing.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pearson, anything, or?
I didn't go first.
Okay. Go ahead.
Go to the drawings in the back, A-2 dot 1 and A-3 dot 1, and you look at, on the right-hand side, it looks like there's something identified on the top of the roof of the existing house. And there's a little picture, I just wonder what that picture's supposed to be telling me? Is that something, they're going to build something, then built something that is, what is that?
I'm flipping through right now, but there is a roof deck with an elevator shaft that leads up to the roof deck on the existing single-family residence.
Right.
But no, no development is proposed for the residence as part of this project.
There's some, parapet wall with the glass trailing, glass railing. What the heck, is that new, coming in, going out?
I believe that's existing, there's, there's no development proposed as part of the...
You're looking at A-3.1?
There's A31 and A21, both, yeah, just...
It's labeled with an E for existing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we can go to public comment also.
But let me, we'll ask the architect, but in that picture there, are we talking the roof you see on the right? Because it doesn't appear to have any railing.
If you, if you go back to the very first picture you showed of the, right there, or, stop, go back, okay, if you look very closely, yeah, right up there, you see a little glass, it's about, it's like 12 inches above the, that's what you're talking about, right? That's what this is?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. All right, so let's go and open up the public comment. So we've got Michael Torrey is the applicant, you'll have 15 minutes. And be sure, if you wanted to save some time, that's fine as well.
You have my presentation. Good evening, thank you Chair and esteemed council members, commission members. The project is proposed, the owner is proposing to simply give up the rights to a buildable lot, for the right to build a pool. And I'm going to wait and comment after we hear what everyone else has to comment, but real basic, if we go through this, one of the, your first question was, what was the railing on top of the wall up above? The existing previously approved roof deck had parapet walls on it, but those parapet walls today don't meet the current codes for railing height. So the glass was introduced to meet the current building codes, okay? And then, this question of, you know, noise and so on, if we keep in mind that this is the proposal of taking away the possibility of a home that would otherwise have air conditioners and family living there and decks on it and so on, for this, for this owner to simply put a pool in. I want to stop here and wait to see what's responded, and then respond to that for the rest of my proposal, okay?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jennifer Johnson and then Lorhan O'Harely. So Jennifer, you're first.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Johnson, I represent the ownership of 3806 Lost Flores Canyon Road. Our property is located directly below the subject property. Due to the nature of the canyon, all neighbors share the common noise corridor. Creating a large entertainment area will adversely affect the peace and quiet of the whole neighborhood. All seven surrounding neighbors would be exposed to the activities of one neighbor. We ask the planning commission to consider that all the neighbors share similar concerns about the impact this project will undoubtedly have. We respectfully ask for you to reduce the proposed scale of the project. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Next up, we have Lorhan and, Lorhan, thank you Lorhan, O'Harely.
Hello Commissioner, my name is Lorhan O'Harely. I am the owner of 3740 Lost Flores Canyon Road, where my residence is located, and 3760 Lost Flores Canyon Road, which is the piece of property, the adjacent property. I'm here tonight, is there two issues that have this planning, application that I have, I'd like to address. The first issue is that the applicant has not been granted an easement across my property located at 3760. If we can go back to our early drawings, I think you've all been there. When you, when you're on Lost Flores Canyon Road, you turn right. I own that property, it is a private access driveway for three owners, and that's just something to be aware of. There's, there's no deeded ingress easement for the applicant to get through my property to get to the subsequent driveway, just as a clarification. That's something to look at and understand. I'm not comfortable with this idea of this additional burden to this driveway, which has already been utilized by other neighboring properties, which only access through my land. So all these properties are accessed through 3760s and easement through my property, ingress egress for all the owners on that particular area. I understand and I appreciate that the applicant does have, they're granted, their deeded easement is on Lost Flores Mesa Drive, that's its primary access. Lost Flores Canyon comes up in a private driveway through my property and then access those owners. They all have deeded easements across my property. My understanding is, through my research and working with a number of the title companies, that does not exist for the applicant. Ultimately, while Mr. Simpson believes he has a deeded ingress egress easement across my property, that is not the case. Collectively, we do not want to increase the burden of access across this private driveway. We who live in that area know how burdensome this is. The road narrows at certain portions of it, it does access three or four properties, it is primarily a secondary, it's a primary access for those people. My understanding is, is that the applicant does have his primary access on Lost Flores Mesa, so that's one critical issue. And our concern is, is that they have the parking area, 20-foot by 20-foot area that is for parking, that is going to be a burden to that street. And that's what my greatest concern is. It's a get to his property has to go through my property. It's a get to his property has to go through my property and that area is going to be parking people. So that's critical. The access to his property across my property is, uh, ingress egress issue, which is, he does not have that right. Um, ultimately, the second issue is that, uh, on the planning commission is they are modifying my, my driveway. Thirty-seven forty driveway, they will be modifying that, there's no drawings to that effect. My driveway is actually wider than they're showing in the drawings and I've never had an opportunity to talk to the applicant or the architect who represents the applicant. So they will be tearing down a portion of my driveway. It would have been wonderful if they had that, if they engaged me as to what they're gonna be doing to this. And in closing, I'm not opposed to Mr. Simpson doing, uh, uh, construction on his property. He has every right. I'm concerned about those critical issues, which
Thank you.
are very important. It's across my property, the ingress easement, and he does not have that.
Thank you. And as a point of clarification, as you drive into that private drive, as you go in, your property's on the left with kind of the tight-knit, uh, black.
Right, as you go up Lost Flores Canyon Road, you do a sharp right, that's my property, that is a, um, uh, it's actually private access for the three owners on that area. It doesn't have a, a name for the road, it's essentially a glorified driveway. That's burdensome. And for me to imagine that there will be another group of people going up there and parking there is gonna be problematic, I think, not only to me, but to my neighbors. It is a concern I have. There isn't not a deeded easement of ingress egress across my property for this applicant.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Uh, we have no other public speakers? Go ahead.
Do you want to ask him?
Oh, oh, sorry. No, 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 we've still got a response time, rebuttal time is still open, so. Um, one more question? Lorcan, thank you. Jeff, your microphone as well.
Yeah. I wanna make sure I understand the argument you're making and, and that it is that the property that, where the improvements are contemplated, does not have access over your, your property?
At this point, it does not.
And the original house, the one that's, that's not being modified, that one does not have access?
That does not have it either. The clarity is, is that Lost Flores Mesa Drive is their primary access.
I get it, I just wanna make sure I understood your argument.
Yes. I do have a plan, you can see, if you go to the first images, you'll see that I own the property, that is this private easement, and all the people on that area have access through it. These properties at this point do not. That's my understanding. I have no concerns with the other development part. This is concern is what affects me.
Thank you. Would you like a moment to rebut? Yeah, I think we had about twelve minutes left, thirteen.
I'd love to hear, uh, Trevor's, uh, response on the easement. Did you have a chance to look over the, the documents? I know that was a, a concern for Lily as well. This was well looked into, uh, regarding the, uh, that road down below, uh, on the Simpson property. Did you have Trevor look at that or no? This question about whether there's, uh, is this gonna go on or? Uh, the, uh, the question about whether there's an, uh, that, that there's deeded easements to these other properties, I think has been vetted, is my understanding. And, uh, years ago when I developed up there, the, the easement isn't specific to, uh, certain properties, but rather was a dedicated road even at one time, it's on title. It, the, the whole purpose of that little flat area down there too is not for parking, he's not gonna have his guests come over there and park, but there's always a concern with neighbors about, hey, people parking on that road. So for, when his landscaper comes over or his pool contractor comes over, somebody has to do some service and they want to be able to, uh, get off the road and be able to pull into his property and not create an inconvenience, that's the, that's the whole purpose of it. Um, let me see if I can get this thing now. So there's no work being done on Mr. O'Hara Lee's property. This is where the, the, the little twenty by twenty-foot area is. This road that comes up here services these properties and was, and if you look at the title reports and, uh, the easement rights, it's not specific to, to any one, one or, or three of these properties, but rather was a dedicated road. If, if for any reason that this, what I'm saying is not factual, that, you know, as far as this little parking spot, the, um, I'm sure the owner would be willing to give it up, but it's not intended for him to be using it for his guests. It would be, uh, very inconvenient to be using it for his guests. If anything, it's just for him to be able to, be able to service his property. I wanna show you some other things too, you're about, people talk about, uh, the, uh, they've mentioned the different sizes of the, the properties around in comparison and, let me see if I've got, uh, take you through, um, is this, this isn't my presentation, can I get to, can you hold your time?
Parker, could you put up the applicant's presentation?
She's got your time held for a sec.
It's a clarification, do I get to rebut this?
No, but we'll, we will, if we need your input, we'll bring it up.
I think that, that regard, the, the issue regarding the road.
Just a sec, let's get the, uh, there you go, okay, go ahead.
The issue regarding the road could be resolved by the city attorney to, to look at it, and we're not, we're not here to, uh, go back and forth on this thing. But there's been this question about, uh, merging these two lots and him, the noise and so on, and the size of the property, that, what this, what this owner's doing, he's willing to, uh, to simply give up the right to build a home here. This is a, a property that has its, uh, rights as a single-family home to be developed. It was a home prior to the ninety-three firestorm and it would be otherwise two and a half stories with deck, air conditionings outside and so on. So noise in the canyon, if anything, a pool is like a sailboat. It gets used probably ten percent of the time that people think they're gonna use it. Also in comparison to, what is this thing going, okay, in comparison to, uh, other properties in the area, the three people that wrote letters, Mr. O'Hara Lee, Marcus Hirsch, and, uh, um, the, the fellows, the, the Barbara and I forget, I forgot their name, that were right down below. Um, let's see. Sorry, I'm not real good with this thing here. Where am I at? Uh, there is, all the blues represent pools in the area. So there, there's a question about people having a pool on a hillside. This area is filled with, uh, homes with hillside pools. In fact, two of the people that wrote letters, Mr. Hirsch and, uh, Gay and Frank, they both have pools and hillside terracing. This is a, in a recent example of an approval that you did in Big Bear, or Big Rock, that had hillside pool, terracing and decking with a enclosed cabana. So what, what my applicants, uh, yeah, my homeowner's asking for is, is within reason, was in, within normal, uh, developments in this area. And as far as the, the merger of the lot, it puts his lot more consistent with the other-sized There's the, here is the, uh, here's the property here and, uh, right next door, this fellow wrote a letter, Frank and Gay, and he's got the, he's got a deck with a pool terracing. Mr. Hirsch, pool, terracing, and, uh, also was, it was a merger of two lots. Uh, Mr. O'Hara Lee also has two lots, which he's got fenced in down there. So I'd like to reserve whatever time left. Okay?
Yeah, if, if, so that'll be in your time then, thank you. All right, so with that, are there any other public speakers? Or we'll, no, so, yeah, thank you. So we'll end the public comment there. Go ahead, John.
Trevor, is the easement situation a civil matter or not our matter?
Yeah, usually the city doesn't like to get into those disputes. This is not an access issue, this is, it's like a secondary access. Um, you know, if, if you guys, it's up to you about what you wanna do with the parking area, whether to allow that or not. I haven't seen any information about their ability, their rights to get into that area.
Let me ask you this, uh, that parking area is on their property, correct?
Yep.
So if some civil litigation determines that he can't use the road, then it's basically a planter or something, right?
Yeah, they, they can always, uh, either one could get a quiet title action to resolve their rights to, um, use of that driveway.
Okay, so you're saying that it's not our concern, it's a, it's a civil concern on the use of that driveway?
Yeah, they have an, they have the ability to resolve that on their own.
Okay.
Quick follow-up question on that, can I, can I ask you a question, Michael? Are you relying on that easement to build out this?
No, not at all. We're nowhere, nowhere near it. Uh, and in fact, it's
So you weren't planning on bringing any equipment into bulldozer or anything on that access road?
Uh, no, we can do that from above.
Okay, thank you.
And certainly that would be reasonable, you know, request, we do that, yeah.
Uh, sorry, and another quick one for you. Michael, um, just you had mentioned that, that it would be easier for your, like, pool team and resource people to come in from the bottom. I'm assuming also kind of a similar argument, if you had to, they could come in from the top where it looks like historically parking's been anyway, is that?
That's right.
Okay, okay. Uh, other discussion?
Um, I'll make, I'll make some comments here. I think these are sort of issues we see quite a bit and, um, issues in neighborhoods, between neighbors is part of this, not all of it, but part of it. And at the, the planning commission level, where we, where we end up is following the code. So we do not resolve civil issues, certainly, um, in my experience. Certainly, if there's an issue with a driveway on a different property being modified, that would certainly, it's not part of this project as far as I've seen, and that would be a civil issue for sure. So, um, and I'm aware the neighbors feel it's been loud there, certainly an issue that's happened in other neighborhoods. That's a civil issue too, so we can't, we're not really ever, that I'm aware of, in the position of changing a project for potential noise violations going forward, which is an uncomfortable situation, but, cause we're not arbitrators of that, we're just following the code. And certainly if there are code violations, um, or no noise issues, I mean, I would encourage in any, in any situation that people call generally the sheriff or whoever. So I know that some neighbors feel there's been really some issues here, it's not in the code. So, which sometimes is fair or unfair, I don't know, but we don't have peruse over that, in my opinion. From what I've seen of this project, doesn't really matter whether I like it or not, but it seems to fit the code as I know it, and at this point, I'm in support of it.
Um, and I, I went in a similar direction, cause there was quite a bit of public comment on what really amounts to disturbances, for lack of a better word. Um, and just to be clear or clarify a little further what, what Commissioner, um, wow, Pearson, I can't remember, I always wanna say Mikey, I don't wanna call you Mikey, I know, I gotta lean over. Well, Commissioner, Commissioner Pearson was saying, um, if you look at, there's a local coastal plan, which this, which staff had to review to make sure that this project fit the local coastal plan, but there's also Malibu municipal code, which has residential development standards. Most of the complaints that I read, pretty much all of them, were coming under the development standards where that, um, more towards nuisance and the sections that you'd wanna focus on that, the, the input seemed to focus on was related to, um, home occupation is, is probably the, the clause you'd look at most, and it looks like you're already kinda on that path. Otherwise, just in terms of, uh, the, the project character, what's being built, it, it pretty well fits with neighborhood character. But go ahead, John? Okay.
Uh, I agree with the comments from Commissioner Pearson. Uh, you know, if, if you didn't have all these complaints in the back of the file, this thing would probably go through in a heartbeat. Uh, it doesn't look like Mr. Simpson's on any, top of anybody's Christmas list. So, you know, I, I do, I, I think Commissioner Pearson's right, there are some rules, there are some noise regulations, there are some filming regulations, and I just encourage the neighbors to become familiar with those. And then, you know, ask Mr. Simpson to maybe try a little harder to, to live with his neighbors. But I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the project.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the plan as staff recommended with the addition that the traffic management plan, uh, be adjusted if it is, uh, if civil action shows that no ingress egress is, uh, uh, given to the project, to Simpson, to this, this project.
Wait, so is, is the condition just that, uh, the
It's, it's a standard, uh, it's condition sixty-four, it's, um, basically a standard, um, you shall submit a construction management plan prior to permit issuance, so it doesn't
But do you consider, do you look at the legality of the access?
Sixty-five, sorry, not sixty-four.
In that process?
Um, the building official typically reviews those. I don't know if they, um, they probably rely on the applicant to say whether they have access rights or not. I don't know if they require them to submit an easement, but it sounds like, uh, the, the neighbor will be vocal about.
Well, then I'd like to adjust the amendment to say that if civil action proves ingress egress is not allowed, it will be considered in the traffic plan.
Okay, so, uh, would that be a change?
I think it would probably be better to do a separate condition. Um, I mean, this just deals with the, like, a general construction management plan as opposed to access rates for the
I think what, what, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Mazza, uh, the condition would be that, um, if a quiet title action determines, a quiet title action or, um, court determination or a court determines that, um, the applicant does not have access to the, how do we identify that driveway?
Uh, lower, lower private driveway?
The lower private driveway, um, that will not, that it shall not be used for, um, for traffic during construction.
The only question I have on that is, civil action could take twenty years, so should we put in a, a time period?
They could pick a, they could get a TRO if they wanna move for that right away. Otherwise
TRO means?
A temporary restraining order.
Okay, so the motion is what you said.
Yeah, does that match your?
That matches what I want.
Okay, is there a second?
Second?
And I have a quick question before we vote, just to clarify. Um, there was a note on grading of a hundred ninety-three cubic yards. I'm assuming that even though the lots are merged, uh, this is still, the grading numbers are based on the lots as though they were individual?
The, the grading calculations are based on the, the project as they're merged, not ?
Well, then, if they're project as merged, then what about the historical grading on the now merged lot? Cause it's now one residential lot, is it subject to a thousand cubic yards total or two thousand cubic yards total?
Um, the, the cumulative calculation goes from, um, the date of the LCP forward. So the, this house date predates the LCP.
And just one last comment I wanted to make, I, it's always uncomfortable when you have projects where there's clearly a lot of neighborhood upset. And I, I know all of us here have spent time going over this, trying to figure it out, cause when there's neighborhood concerns, you know, we take it seriously. That's why we're here, to have, to hear the public's input and to take it and factor it in and see how it fits with the code. So it goes, it should go without saying, but I don't wanna say it, that if we've missed something that you think should have been included, um, are you, I don't know, something along those lines, you can appeal this, our decision, and you have ten days to do so. So I just wanna point that out.
Very good, let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Chair Marx?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So next up is item five A, sorry, okay, item five A coastal development permit number?
Five D.
Oh, that's, no, it's five A.
Rambla Vista, right?
Uh, yeah, Rambla Vista, yeah, yeah, okay, no problem. So item five A, coastal development permit number one four dash zero one nine, lot line adjustment number one four dash zero zero two, initial study number one six dash zero zero one, and negative declaration number one seven dash zero zero one, an application for a lot line adjustment with no new development proposed. Maybe I'll Maybe we have a staff report.
Good evening again, Chair Marx and members of the Planning Commission. The two subject properties are located on Rambla Vista in eastern Malibu. PCH is located to the south of the project site. Lot 1 is located at 21651 Rambla Vista, outlined in green. The vacant parcel is 1.5 acres and consists of a level building pad and a driveway. To the south of the building pad, the parcel slopes down towards Rambla Vista, which is right here. Approximately half of the site contains 2.5 to 1s, or steeper slopes. Lot 2 is right here. Lot 2 is located at 21653 Rambla Vista. The parcel is 4.7 acres in size and is developed with residential uses. The parcel slopes down towards the south and the west. There is escha along the western boundary that separates the property from LA County Fire Station, right here. And here's lot 1 for reference. As shown on the color-coded slope analysis, the site contains slopes steeper than 2.5 to 1, which is shown in red. The flat areas are shown in yellow, and are in the location of the vacant building pad on lot 1, and the developed area on lot 2, as well as the driveway leading to the residence on lot 2. Lot 1 was previously developed with a 3,000 square foot residence, as shown in this 1979 photo. The existing residence on lot 2 is shown to the left, and the fire station is right here. In 1998, a landslide damaged the residence on lot 1, and the driveway on lot 2, and eventually resulted in the demolition of the residence on lot 1. This 2002 photo shows the residence that was damaged from the landslide. Restoration work began in 2006 and involved construction of a soil nail wall, drainage improvements, slope stabilization on both lots, repair of the driveway on lot 2, and restoration of the building pad on lot 1. This photo is from 2011, so here's lot 1, here's the residence on lot 2. This photo is taken in 2013 and shows current conditions on lot 1. The vegetation has filled out up here to help screen the existing retaining walls. The residence on lot 2 is above and behind the walls, you can see the roof line right here. The photo on the left is taken from Rambla Vista facing south towards PCH. Here's the PCH and Rambla Vista intersection. And shows the debris wall at the base of lot 1, and a V ditch. The photo on the right shows the same V ditch, looking up at the single-family residence on lot 2. The proposed project involves a lot line adjustment between two legal adjacent lots. So the existing lot line is shown in yellow here, the proposed lot line is shown in blue. The lot line adjustment would transfer half an acre of land from lot 2 to lot 1. And the area to be transferred is shown in green. The purpose of the lot line adjustment is to locate previously installed site restoration improvements that currently traverse both properties onto one property or another to clarify maintenance responsibilities. No development is proposed as part of the lot line adjustments. Both lots would meet lot size, lot width, and lot death requirements. The building pad on lot 1, just shown here, has ample root for future development, and the residence on lot 2 complies with step-back standards. The lot line adjustment would not increase development potential. Lot 1 does have a minimum lot size of 1 acre, and because it would be increased to 2 acres, there, I guess it could technically be subdivided, but given the steep slopes on the site and the small building pad, this is likely not feasible. An initial study was prepared for the project because lot line adjustments with 20% slopes are not exempt from CEQA. So an initial study was prepared, followed by a negative declaration, which identified no potential significant impacts. A public comment period ran from March 8th to April 11th, 2018, and one no comment letter was received from the LA County Fire Department. No correspondence has been received for this project. And staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 1836, adopting the initial study, negative declaration, and approving CDP Number 14019 and lot line adjustment Number 14002. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you as well, any disclosures?
I drove, I drove up, took a look at the lot, just to see what it looked like, and saw what I saw.
Did you see anything that was not revealed by the staff report? Okay.
I drove, I didn't drive all the way up to the lot, but I drove by the wall, and I also know the prior owner, Joan Levine, but I learned nothing.
Drove by, didn't learn anything, anything new?
Lived in the neighborhood for years, walked up there a couple times. Really quite ugly up close with all those retaining walls, but nothing, that wasn't mentioned in the staff report.
Thank you, any questions of staff?
Yes, Trevor, we're creating, essentially, could be creating an extra lot, because subdivision could be done. Can we restrict this to not being able to be subdivided?
I'll let Trevor answer the question, but I just wanted to, there's a little mat flying around. I wanted to expand on what Lily said briefly about the subdividing of the lot. We looked at it pretty carefully, and the findings required to divide a lot, say that you can't, you can't, if you subdivide it, you would not create a driveway across steep slopes, or across escha. It wouldn't require any additional grading beyond the existing condition, and certain things like that, that under these particular slope conditions, we didn't feel like it was feasible to make those findings.
But that's not to say somebody in the future could.
Well, somebody could try.
Yeah, so Trevor, can we restrict this lot to single-family house, or can we rezone it to RR2?
Well, if you're going to rezone it, you're going to have to bring out the zoning text amendment to change the zoning on it. I don't, I'm not sure what you would use as the grounds for putting that condition in.
Well, the grounds would be that we're taking a lot that is, allows only one house, and creating a lot that allows two houses. We're increasing density.
John, let me just, you know, as you go through the staff report, it must say that five times in the staff report.
Lily just said, conceptually, it could be.
Right, I mean, you know.
So, the staff report 20 years from now doesn't mean squat. Or the other alternative would be to adjust the lot line to make it slightly under 2 acres.
Yeah, that would probably be the more appropriate choice. But your question is whether you're going to, whether you can make the findings that are requested here. So if there's a finding that you can't make, that you would need to make, that you would need a condition for, you need to identify that.
I didn't understand that. My finding is that we are increasing density, and therefore, we do not want to increase density, and so we want to restrict it to one-
They requested an entitlement, and that, and in order to get that entitlement, that you need to be, the question is whether you can make these findings. And if you can make the findings, the five findings requested, then you have an obligation to-
Which five findings? Where are you?
Page 14, starts with letter J.
It's like least environmentally damaging, or something like that, we'd have to say, it doesn't fit that.
14?
So number one, yeah, finding one, the lots proposed to be created by the lot line adjustment comply with all applicable zoning regulations.
Look at finding three, no further, finding three says, "No additional parcels shall result in a lot line adjustment," right?
Right.
And the only way you can guarantee that is by conditioning, isn't it?
You got two parcels now, you're going to have two parcels after it's over. That's what it means when it says, "No additional parcels will be created by the lot line."
Yeah, but you can have serial adjustments, so.
But there wouldn't be, the question is, would the proposed project create an additional parcel, and it's not, it's just create, it'd be the same number?
It could create a potential additional parcel.
Yeah, but that's not what the finding is.
Well, I want to make another finding then.
I mean, when I, I mean, here, when I read it, that, it just popped out at me, because like, five times in the staff report, it says, "It's not reasonable that this could be split up," all right? Now, I would believe it's not reasonable until, you know, while back, we defined 12-foot walls covered in foliage as open space, okay? So my belief of what's reasonable, it isn't reasonable, it's changed a lot. And if we believe that, you know, we want this not to be subdivided, then let's condition it not to be subdivided.
But the condition, if you, if you, if your concern is that in the future somebody will alter the standards under which the subdivision would be allowed or not, they can also remove this condition you're imposing. You can't bind the future forever with your own decision, you know? If the change can be made later on, it can be changed, it can be undone now.
Then make them come back and do that, but they've got to-
Well, we don't know that they can't do it today.
Let's go one at a time.
The other thing, the other thing, and my question is, this essentially is owned by the city, or some version of the city. Because they had to take it over from Joan Levine, because it slid.
It's owned by the Joint Powers Insurance Authority.
Right, okay, which is joined by the city, we're part of the joint powers. So, so you're saying the only way to correct this is to change the lot, the lot to its less than 2 acres?
Well, I'd ask that, because finding three on the coastal development permit says the least environmentally damaging, so could the argument be made that this has more potential to damage the environment because it introduces the potential to split the lot?
Absolutely.
Therefore, we can't agree with that finding?
Yeah. But this is all up, I don't want to turn the project down, I just want to say, it's not the least environmentally damaging unless we restrict it.
Right, so that would be our recommendation, is to reduce the size by un-
We don't have a public-
Yeah, we're still in, that's true, that's true, yeah, yeah, yeah. Do we have any speakers? I have no slips on this, so I'll go in, open and close. No speaker slips? Yeah, okay, going to open public comment, any speakers on this? Great, I'm going to close. Oh, great, you have, have you filled out a slip, sir? All right?
You can do it after.
And your name, sir?
Sure. Justin Block, and I am here on behalf of Mr. Adler, the owner of lot 2. I just want, for clarity purposes, we are talking about lot 1 with this condition, not lot 2. I just want to clarify, because that wasn't clarified.
Yeah, no, absolutely right.
That is it, I think the staff report does say, and I don't think it was mentioned, that when you're talking about amount of acreage to subdivided properties, it excludes roadways, and if you excluded the roadway, that would be in lot 1, it would reduce the net acreage to under 2 acres. Well, at least, that's what the staff report says on page 2, last sentence. So, just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? I'll go in, close, oh, one more, okay. Come forward, please.
Justin, don't forget to fill out a speaker slip.
Thank you.
My name's Chris Johnson, I'm here representing the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority.
Your name again, sir, sorry?
Chris Johnson.
Thank you, Chris.
So just wanted to add one thing, is in this particular situation, we are not looking to divide the property into two separate parcels. The improvements that are constructed on the lot are vertical soil nail walls with very small, flat spaces in between. So if we ran into a situation where someone was coming in and now said, "We have a 2-acre lot, therefore we're entitled to build a separate residence," they could not do that, because as soon as they filed an application for that, it would be not in keeping with building and safety, planning, public works, you name it. So it would get denied on all fronts. So that's, that's not the, that's not the intent of what we're doing. The intent is to pick up all the constructed improvements that were built as part of this project, and bring them into the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority's ownership and purview, so that they can maintain those improvements. Because right now, the lot line straddles the two properties. So we have walls on one side of the fence, so to speak, and we have walls on our side of the fence, so.
Go ahead, John.
So you're saying that since you believe it's not divisible, you would have no problem with us making it not divisible?
Well, I think that, you know, maybe one of the ways to do it is stay out of condition that says, we have to, you know, we have to go ahead and sign the affidavit of, you know, agreeing with the conditions of approval, that we have a condition that says there's no intent for us to, you know, that we can, we can restrict the lot from, or a future owner's successor from moving forward with the construction of a separate lot. You couldn't do it there, it's physically impossible, and it would never make it through the process.
Due to vertical walls, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, so any other public comments?
Can I clarify, did you say that you would accept a condition that would restrict the division of parcel 1? Or that you were willing to adjust it to be less than 2 acres?
Well, I think at this point, we don't want to adjust the lot line, taking a lot of time to get to the point where, that we have. It would be a major step backwards. So I think if we were going to move forward with this, speaking on the behalf of the CJPIA, that we've got no problem conditioning the property to one residential unit. There's absolutely no problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thanks again. Any other public comment, and Mr. Johnson, please fill out a slip when you get a minute as well. Thank you. Okay, with that then, I'll close public comment, now we'll bring it back up here.
Okay, can you help me make that motion? Approval with a no.
I'm sensing that your motion is staff's recommendation that adds a condition, as proposed by the applicant, that would restrict lot 1 from being subdivided into more than one parcel?
Correct, so moved.
Second.
Do we have a second? All right, all in favor?
I'm sorry, just-
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to go with what we said on the last item, which is that if the project comes forward and meets the standard of the code, that that's what we're supposed to be applying. And there's no particular requirement in the code of this, one way or another. The fact that you may personally have desires one way or another should be irrelevant in your decision, so I'm going to oppose the motion.
Call the motion.
Let's have a roll call vote then.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Chair Marx?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you again. So next up is item 5B, coastal development permit number 14-050, and site planner view number 14-034, and is, and a application to construct a new two-story, single-family residence and associated development. May we please have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Chair Marx and members of the commission. The next item on the agenda is a coastal development permit for 5011 Ensnell Canyon Road. This includes a site plan review for construction over 18 feet in height. The property is located between Ensnell Canyon Road and Pacific Coast Highway in the rural residential 2-acre zoning district, and is approximately a third of an acre in size. The project before you tonight consists of a new 3,308-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence with an 869-square-foot basement, decks, swimming pool, spa, open-air trellis, retaining walls not to exceed 6 feet in height, 349 cubic yards of non-exempt grading, and a new onsite wastewater treatment system. A site plan review for construction to exceed 18 feet in height, up to 24 feet with a flat roof. The property is relatively flat, with slightly higher slopes along Ensnell Canyon Road that descend towards Pacific Coast Highway. The project proposes to take access from Ensnell Canyon Road to reduce congestion along PCH. A culvert and drainage course exist immediately northwest of the property, with a culvert located in the public right-of-way, adjacent to the property line. The proposed development has been designed to minimize impacts on the existing drainage course. The city Public Works Department and city geotechnical staff have reviewed and approved the proposed development, and determined that no impacts to the drainage course are foreseeable. The proposed residence has been designed with a flat roof, reaching 24 feet in height at the highest point in the southeast corner. The proposed residence meets the 2/3s requirements, and measures at 20 and 20.5 feet in height at Ensnell Canyon Road. Story poles were erected twice on the property, once in November of 2017 to address the potential view impacts, and again in April of 2018, upon establishing a hearing date. The photograph on the top shows the views of the proposed structure, taken from Pacific Coast Highway. The photograph on the bottom shows the views from Ensnell Canyon. Due to the size, shape, and topography of the subject site, there's no place on the property where the residence would not be- property where the residence would not be visible from PCH. Additionally, although the proposed development will block views from Ensignal Canyon directly in front of the proposed residence, a residence 18 feet or less would have the same impacts at that location. As indicated in the staff report, staff has received correspondence from the property owners at 4984 and 4986 Ensignal Canyon Road. The owners were concerned that the proposed development would obstruct their views of the ocean, and that the lot was not a legal lot. It was determined through discussion that the views from the basement of 4986 Ensignal Canyon would be blocked, however, the views from the main living areas would not be obstructed. It was also determined that through photographs taken from the property owner, that the views from 4984 Ensignal Canyon would not be obstructed. The subject property owner was also required to verify the lot was legally established. The owner submitted all the required documentation for the Public Works Department and Planning Department to confirm that the lot was legally created in 1960. The owner of 4984 Ensignal Canyon has submitted additional correspondence, which was distributed to the commissioners, indicating that she has been in discussions with the subject property owner with regards to the exterior wall color and roof color. The submitted correspondence also discusses a concern regarding ocean view encroachment due to future growth of planted trees. The resolution contains a condition prohibiting the proposed trees from blocking primary views with consideration of future growth, and limiting exterior colors to earth tones, which will blend with the surrounding development. All written correspondence has been included and forwarded as part of the packet. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 1837, approving the project as conditioned, and this concludes my presentation, and the applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thanks a lot. Can we have disclosures?
No disclosure. I visited the site this morning with Commissioner Pearson. We walked the property, didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report.
Thank you.
I have viewed the site from the Keller's house, and I talked to Lucille Keller on the telephone yesterday. I learned nothing that wasn't in the staff report.
Thank you. I visited the property, drove, walked it, and then drove up in front of the Keller's home to get a sense of perspective there, and learned nothing new from the, beyond the staff report.
As I said in the last item, I lived near this for about 10 years, as opposed to the other one.
So, you didn't live in the city?
I, I, I visited the lot with Vice Chair Euring today. We met with the owner and the applicant. I, I was shocked this was a legal lot when this came to us. I learned to surf right there. I know this area intimately. I could not believe this wasn't owned by Caltrans or somebody, so I was absolutely caught off guard. I caught off guard that anyone would want to live there, actually, because it's absolutely the loudest noise corridor it was this morning. But we met with the owner and applicant. I also was very curious about the interesting drainage next to this lot, and I, I will have questions on that, but I know it's been gone over, I just have some questions on it. So, I was also very curious about view blockage issues, but some photos that were submitted definitely added to my knowledge on that, and that made a difference, and I think that's my disclosure.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
I have a question. Which condition is it that conditions the height of foliage?
It is under the biology section.
On page nine of 17?
Also on 30, 31, on page eight of 17.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. Go ahead, John.
Is Ensignal Canyon a, one of the scenic routes on, in the coastal act, in our LIP?
Yes, it is.
And does this property block views from Ensignal Canyon? That, your presentation seemed to show it blocking views.
The only area where I could see that it blocked the view was directly in front of where the driveway would be. If I go back.
Yeah, could we see that, right there?
Yeah, that's, that's the only area, because just to the west, where you see those trees, there's several mature trees there, so if you're coming down Ensignal Canyon, driving towards PCH, the story poles are essentially all blocked by those trees, and those are not proposed to be removed. When you're coming up Ensignal Canyon from PCH, it's such a steep embankment and turn that you really don't see the story poles, you're not, they're not blocking the view of anything except part of the area anyway, but you really don't see the story poles until you make that sharp turn and you come up. So, right in front is where you would see, you can see the blue water there, but there's no other place on the property that the homeowner could put a house, and even if you had a house that was 18 feet or 16 feet, you're still going to block those views at that point.
Well, is, is that a view of the second floor or the first floor?
That's the total height.
Yeah, but is, is that a two-story section?
Yes, it's two-story.
So, that is the second floor? So, he could have a house without the second floor?
He could have a house without the second floor, but I don't understand what the question is.
The question is, if you removed the blockage of the view?
No, if he, if he went down to one floor and it was 18 feet, he would still be blocking that view directly in front of his house. You wouldn't be able to have a structure there and not block the house. So, as I was saying, even if he proposed 18 feet or 15 feet, that blue water view you see right there would be blocked.
And if he entered from PCH, he could have a house without blocking that view?
No, the house would just still be in the same location, just a different point for the driveway.
Okay. And then, on Jeff's question on the, on number 31, who's going to monitor that? I mean, I, my question would be, wouldn't it be better to have an absolute height, rather than somebody's opinion on whether it blocked view?
That is something that we could add to the resolution, and if we did have an absolute height, it would also have to be monitored, so.
Yeah, but it would be definitive, okay. And then, the second question is, the color condition absolutely excludes white, right? And light colors? So, we don't need to deal with that. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jessica. What I found interesting, and I don't, I know it's on the property next door, is that drainage next to it. So, it's a, a pipe that goes under Ensignal, looks like a 24-inch pipe. It's somewhat clear at the moment, looks like somebody maintains it, and I'm not sure who. It was a couple of tumbleweeds trying to make an impact, but they hadn't yet. But then, when it comes out, right next to their property, it just doesn't, it's not contained anymore. Is there, was there anyone looking at if, if there's a huge rain? We know how much material can be moved in a huge rain. Would it undercut? It looks like it would almost undercut towards their property. Was that studied, as far as you know?
That was looked at in the conformance analysis, and they are proposing some retaining walls along, it'd be the western side of the property, it'd be the top line on the site plan here, and that would protect the property from any kind of erosion impacts. But Public Works and Geology also looked at what the potential for the development would have on the existing drainage canal, because they didn't want to have any kind of, they want to have it rerouted in some way that wouldn't be foreseeable.
Right. It doesn't look like it would reroute the construction to me, but it did look like the water could reroute its way into the house potentially. That was my, my concern, but, and I saw it was addressed, but it was a little hard for me to totally grasp. So, even though it's on another property, it's been factored into this project.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
And just, I'm just trying to learn, if, if I look at the landscape, landscape plan, the trees that they have proposed for the Ensignal Canyon side of the house are coastal oaks. They're going to be big trees. I mean, do, do we typically, if we want to keep the tree height, there's something close to the top of the, do we propose different trees? I mean, how do, how do we do, how do you do that? I'm just, you guys are smarter than me, I'm trying to figure it out.
Well, coastal oaks are generally very slow-growing, but yes, they can get quite large, so we can put something in the resolution about some sort of definitive height requirement, and they can be trimmed down without it affecting the tree too much.
Okay. You don't, you don't propose particular kinds of trees, or we don't do that?
Should we get the, I'd like to open the public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If that's okay, John, is there anything specific?
All right, just a question on that. Coastal oaks, you can't cut down, right?
You can trim them, yes.
Great. So, with that, we do have Tiffany Builders is the applicant. I don't have a speaker slip from them, but I would like to gavel in the public comments. And if you would like to speak, you have 15 minutes, otherwise, that can be reserved for rebuttal. At this point, we'll call up Lucille Keller. You have four minutes.
Continue that one.
I have a presentation.
Is the applicant here? Did you want to present? Okay, you should go first if you're going to, sorry, the applicant should go first.
We'll let the applicant go, we just didn't have a slip from them. Let's do that. Sorry, Lucille, thank you. And your pen is on the floor to the right? Thank you. And your name, if you could also turn in a slip when you're done?
Good evening, my name is Fran Hadian, I'm the applicant for the proposed project. Do you want me to explain a little bit about the project?
The applicant team gets 15 minutes in order to make a presentation if you want to. If you don't want to, that's, that's okay, too. And then, you can reserve time after the public comment.
We'll just wait.
Very good. So, you'll have about 15 minutes, if there's anything you want to address after.
Sure.
Everybody else speaks. Thank you. Your turn now, ma'am.
Lucille Keller, 4984 Ensignal. Not all the neighboring properties are high above the site and look over the roof. Our property is at a lower level, and although just skirting our blue water view, the house will become a part of our view, and we're going to look at it for the rest of our lives. The photo that I attached to the letter that we sent to you is taken from the inside of our dining room. As the story, story poles show, we'll be looking at the second story and the roof. The zoning out there is RR2, but the lot, as you know, is only one-third of an acre, which creates a problem building the maximum amount of square footage allowed, therefore, the two stories. If this project was single-story, we would not see it. The site originally part of an 18-acre parcel, which I think is still 18 acres, because as far as I know, that's never been subdivided. It was condemned, if that's the term, many years ago, by the state for road purposes. It was supposed to be a road, that's why it's that width. They, at some point, sold it to a private party, because when I looked at the title search on it, it was owner after owner after owner. If you grant approval, I'm, my biggest concern is precedent, and I would like some kind of statement in the conditions that this cannot be used for future RR2 properties to follow. Without that 18 acres there of RR2, there's a huge potential, if that should happen. And I'm not saying that you would do it, but we have to deal with subsequent planning commissions. Because of the view of the house is so close to the bottom edge of our blue water view, we are concerned that foliage that could ultimately grow into the blue water view not be planted, especially on the south and east sides. We would ask that approval be conditioned to specify that no vegetation be allowed, that at maturity would be taller than 18 feet from the ground. Since we will see the structure, the colors used will be very important to temper how intrusive it is on our view. We are very relieved that the LIP specifically requires new development. If seen from a scenic highway, and there are two, one on each side, to use earth-tone colors, which will be a condition of approval. I spoke with the owner, and he is willing to use shades of brown rather than the white and gray, which was their first choice, but I, I would like to see this specified in the resolution. I know that there, it says earth tones, but I'm, I'm not sure that's sufficient. We are concerned that these conditions, I had six minutes. Okay.
I had four minutes, you've got 30 seconds.
We're concerned that these conditions, the foliage limit, the precedent issue, and the color stipulation, be memorialized in the resolution, because even though houses are built with the intent to occupy, often, the house is sold shortly after completion.
Can I ask, can I ask one favor, just so we can pause for a sec? You only had four minutes?
No, I had, I thought I had six.
Each, each speaker additional slip gives you another minute. So, we'll give you another like 10 or 15 seconds, but we can't give you too much.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
New owners may not realize these restrictions and not comply, unless they're stipulated in the construction documents. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Okay, any, would you like to, just come forward at all?
The project was filed back in 2014 and went through a detailed review by all departments, and it complies with all local coastal program and local implementation, implementation plan, and conforms with all departmental reviews. As for the concerns of the neighbor and the notes in their letter, we, we would like to include the color tone that goes for the roof finish to be within the brown shades, so if they don't like to have, to see neutral colors, we will comply with that. I don't know how it will be included as a condition. And for the trees, the question Commissioner Mazza had was a question for us to, that, or maybe Vice Chair Euring, that how do you actually include the condition? You have trees specified on the landscape plan, and you want the, the project to look nice, but how do you include the condition that the tree doesn't grow taller than 18, 18 feet? So, we want to include that as a part of conditions of approval.
Got it. So, just to clarify, you were willing to have a limitation on the height of the trees, and then, for the brown tones, that was in agreement with the neighbors as well?
Yes, because what, what's the, what will be the final finish of the built-up roof is basically whatever color that goes with the, with the material. We had gravel on top of that, which is neutral color. It's, gravel is basically crushed concrete, and it's similar color to seashells, similar tones. So, we thought that it's a better choice to have, to keep it in natural elements and neutral colors, but if it's too bright and the, our neighbor doesn't like to see the area of light color, we can change that to the medium brown or brown tones.
Okay. Then, yeah, I think with that, any other public comments? And thank you for answering that.
Sure.
Any other comments from the public? Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment out. Oh, yeah, and please do turn in your slip as well, just so we have reference for your name and everything. Your, your speaker slip, have you done that before?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
You'll be, if you could, there's a slip like this out on the table.
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, there's one out on the table out back, if you could fill that in.
Kathleen can give you one.
Yeah, Kathleen has one here. Thank you again. So, with that, I'll close out the public comment, and bring it up here for discussion.
To me, we've covered two of the, one of the big ones, which is the color, which they've agreed to. They've agreed to try and keep the trees down. The question is, how do we condition that? So that, how do you do, have you done that in the past, and how do you do that? I don't, John's done it. Go ahead, John.
Well, what you do, and as far as the trees go, is you condition it that no foliage shall be planted, which will grow over 18 feet, and then, that's the limit. It makes it very easy 40 years from now, if it's 30 feet, to look it up, and that's what it is. That's pretty much the language we've used in the past. I don't know if you prefer a different language.
You'd say the, no, if you used to exceed 18 feet in height, is that what we're looking for?
Well, at full growth, it shall exceed 18 feet in height.
There, there's a, there's a couple of different ways to do it. You could specify that they have to use a tree that won't exceed 18 feet at height, in height at maturity, or... Or in the past, we've also conditioned the trees not to be allowed to exceed the height of the house, for example. So there's a couple of different ways to do it. But if you want the trees to not exceed 18 feet in height at maturity, we could condition the project that they find some appropriate tree and get that approved.
You can't do coastal oak story. You can't trim a co... Can you?
You can trim them, but you can't cut six, trunk bigger than six inches.
Can you trim a coastal oak? Are we allowed to do that?
You can trim a coastal oak. You can't trim it more than 30% of its foliage canopy at one time without harming it.
Okay, so I would say Bonnie's... I make a motion using Bonnie's recommendation that you plant trees that cannot exceed 18 feet at height of maturity.
Okay. So is the motion staff's recommendation with adding a condition that any trees planted on the property shall not exceed 18 feet in height at maturity as approved by the city biologist?
Correct.
And there is also, was it only the roof, or is it the...
Well, I want to just make sure with Bonnie, I want to make a motion that does the color... It says the new structure shall incorporate colors. Does that include the roof?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so is the motion as written that says green, brown, gray, and no white or light shades, does that solve the problem? That they can't have a white roof, and it can't be white? It has to be brown, green, or gray?
Yes, that does solve the problem. They could not have a white or a light, bright-toned roof with that condition. If you wanted to be specific and require it to be brown, that you would have to tweak.
Yeah, because right now it allows green, brown, or gray. You'd have to eliminate the green and gray.
Could I ask the applicant a question? Are you ever gonna paint this thing green?
The roof, you mean?
The house, the roof.
Never.
Okay, so I would like to restrict it to brown. Make the motion to, on 63A, eliminate everything but brown?
You mean 67A?
67A, yeah. I don't have my glasses.
So eliminate green and leave brown and gray? Is that what you said?
Just make it brown.
Okay, so eliminate green and gray. So then the motion to staff's recommendation with condition 67A as proposed, except green and gray shall be stricken from 67A. And then also adding a condition, as I stipulated before, that no trees shall be planted on the property that will exceed 18 feet in height at maturity as approved by the city biologist.
Correct. Okay, that's the motion.
One question on that. There was another point brought up in Mrs. Keller about the lots adjacent. Is there anything we talked?
I didn't bring that up, because I assume, and Trevor could tell me I'm wrong, but I assume that we can't restrict zoning on adjacent lots.
No, you won't be able to buy in the future, any future council or planning commission.
So that's my full motion.
Is there a second? So we have a second from Commissioner Jennings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, that motion carries. Next up, we have item 5C, coastal development permit number 15-063, site plan review number 15-051, minor modification number 16-008, and demolition permit number 16-006, an application for the demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence and associated development. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioner Marks, members of the planning commission. The application for a coastal development permit before you tonight is for a new single-family residence that was presented to the planning commission at its July 24, 2017, planning commission meeting. After deliberation, the planning commission requested that the item be brought back with revised plans demonstrating an increased front yard setback for the detached accessory building on the site. The project before you tonight includes those revisions that include the relocation of the proposed detached building. Here's the aerial photograph of the subject site. The site is located on the north side of Cliffside Drive within the Point Dune neighborhood. Surrounding properties are zoned RR1 and are developed with single-family residences. The site was previously disturbed in the past to accommodate the existing development on the site, which consists of flat development area and descending slopes towards the north of the property, towards an existing drainage course that runs along the rear of the property. With regards to the proposed project, although the detached building was relocated to provide an increased front yard setback, the scope of the work remains the same. The project consists of a demolition of an existing residence on the site and associated development, including the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence, a one-story detached structure that consists of a garage, guesthouse, and basement. The proposed project also includes a site plan review for height up to 28 feet for the residence and a minor modification for a 25% reduction of the required front yard setback for the detached building. Here's the site plan of the proposed project. The property has provided access along the south portion of the site from Cliffside Drive. The area indicated in yellow is the proposed detached structure with a request for the minor modification. You have accessory development that include a new wastewater system, a trellis, and a pool that is going to be made a little bit smaller within the center portion of the site. And then you have the main residence located on the northern portion of the site with cantilever decks towards the drainage course area. So here's the site plan demonstrating the required front yard setback of 62.2 feet. The proposed detached building, which includes the guesthouse and garage and basement, will be providing a 46.6-foot front yard setback, which is required for the minor modification request. The minor modification allows for up to a 50% setback reduction. However, the applicant is proposing only a 25% setback reduction. The project originally proposed a 35.5-foot setback for the detached building from Cliffside Drive. However, the applicant has revised the plans to increase the setback by approximately 11 feet per the direction of the planning commission in order to make the necessary findings for approval of the minor modification. Staff has determined that the detached building will blend with existing development and will not adversely affect neighborhood character, in that it does not exceed 18 feet in height, it maintains an ample front yard setback, and meets the required side and rear yard setbacks for the project. Here's the elevation of the proposed main residence. The elevation on the top is the elevation that's facing towards the drainage course that has the rear decks. The elevation on the bottom is the elevation facing Cliffside Drive that gives it a one-story appearance. The main residence will be constructed in excess of 18 feet, which includes a site plan review request. The residence provides a 148-foot front yard setback, which shifts the massing of the building further from the street and onto a portion of the site with a lower elevation, minimizing visual impacts on the streetscape. Here are the east and west elevations, showing the site elevations of the proposed main residence. As you can see here, you have some steps that lead from the top of the site towards the cantilever decks at the rear. The marker of the line in red is the 18-foot height from the lowest adjacent finished grade, which is the steps. The areas that are above that red line are the areas exceeding 18 feet, which require the site plan review approval. Here are the elevations for the detached building. As you can see, you have the basement directly below the guesthouse and the garage. As shown in the south elevation, the street-facing side of the detached building is 25 feet wide and 13 feet tall, which reduces visual impacts that may result from the setback reduction that is proposed. The detached building does not require a site plan review in that it does not exceed 18 feet. So again, the site plan review is only applicable to the main residence. As designed, the proposed project is consistent with development and design standards of the LCP, and staff has determined that there is no evidence of an adverse impact to neighborhood character resulting from the proposed project. This is the floor plan for the proposed detached building. I'm gonna try to highlight here the areas. You have the guesthouse area on the northern portion of the building. On the southern portion of this detached building, you have the garage. As you exit the guesthouse onto the aggrate deck, you go around and you hit the lightwell that leads down to the gym that has a full restroom facility and also a storage area. Story poles were originally installed in May of 2017 and later reinstalled in October to demonstrate the relocation of the detached building with the increased front yard setback. The image on the top left is the image of the main residence, the story poles, demonstrating the proposed two-story main residence looking from within the project site beyond the existing pool towards the drainage course. And then you have the photograph on the lower right-hand side, which demonstrates the location of the proposed detached building, which again includes the garage and guesthouse. This is looking east from within the current existing driveway access to the site. Based on the site visit and after-story pole installation, staff determined that the project is compatible with surrounding residences and development pattern in the neighborhood and would not adversely impact neighborhood character. In closing, based on the revised project plans, staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution 18-31 approving coastal development permit 15-063, site plan review 15-051, minor modification 16-008, and demolition permit number 16-006. Staff has not received any correspondence to date, and that's the end of the presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any disclosures?
I visited the site with Commissioner Pearson at the first time they came in front of us, and did not go back this time, so...
I visited the site the first time it came to us, and Friday I met with Doug Burge and the architect on the job, which I can't remember her name, and went over several details, which were a little vague in the plans, but basically they're there.
I visited the site, didn't learn anything, not on the staff report.
I visited the site with Vice Chair Euring whenever it was, and didn't have a problem with the detached building then, so probably still don't.
Great. Any questions of staff?
Slight one that we can save for... I don't want to do all the others, but on the fencing, your compliance table says that there's 42 inches impermeable and six feet permeable, which is more than six feet. And that's... And then the conditions say that all the fencing is split rail, which doesn't match up with the plans which talk about chain link. So I'm wondering what kind of fencing we're approving?
The split rail fencing is a requirement that, a condition that was applied by the city biologist. There is gonna be no fencing proposed on the northern portion of the site along the drainage course, because you have steep slopes that are more than 4:1. The plans do demonstrate a section showing the elevation of the proposed fencing in the front yard, and it's gonna be in compliance with the conditions of approval that require that anything above the 42 inches be view permeable, 90% to the open, view permeable fencing.
Okay, and so the existing fencing there is not the fencing that's gonna be there?
Yes, the applicant will be proposing new front yard fencing for this project within the front yard area, outside of those 4:1 slopes.
Okay, and do we need... So everything else, the way the resolution reads, everything else is split rail. Is that correct?
Yes, that's gonna be split rail fencing, again, because of the size of the lot. It requires that there be open split rail fencing for wildlife to pass through.
Usually that's over a half an acre, but this is the whole property is gonna be that way on both sides?
Not the whole property, in the front yard you're gonna have...
Yeah, the front yard, other than the front yard. And then, is there anything that says in the conditions that there's no fencing on the 4:1 slope?
Yes, we have specific conditions of approval. I believe it's condition number, starting in condition number 75, we require that the project not provide for any kind of fencing that is not, that is view permeable above the 42 inches.
No, I'm talking about, you're not allowed any fencing on a 4:1?
Condition number 79, no development including fencing shall occur on slopes of 4:1 or steep.
Okay, great, okay. I'll wait on the rest of them until after the presentations.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, so with that, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. We've got Joe Luzuma and Doug Burge. You're available for questions. I assume you don't have a presentation to give then, correct? Okay, you wanna come up? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Burge, the architect for the project. Thanks for hearing the project again. I think it was back in July that we originally come to this commission. When I had met with John on Friday, we had gone over a few things and a few questions, and obviously I'll be here to answer that. And one of the things that... Carlos, you wanna put up the slide of the site plan?
Parker does that from the control room.
Okay. Parker, put up the slide.
The, we need the applicant presentation.
There we go. Just, yeah. Site plan's fine. Okay. So some of the things we talked about was the front yard setback, and we had considered that not be, apparently it's not an issue, we can still talk about that. We did move it back from the original presentation as Carlos presented. The other thing that was in the actual first presentation, which talked about the pool, the pool exists, and those of you that have been up to the site, and that was a key part of this design project, is that the pool itself has some history to it and the family, and we, and they really wanted to keep that pool. It's a long pool. It's wanting to be, you know, kept in its pretty much exact location. So we were never moving the pool. So then placing the building basically to the right of the pool, but keeping it away from the steeper 4:1 slopes was a critical part, I mean, within inches. And so working with the slope analysis and the existing grades, that was a very careful part of the design, and still being enough away from the pool that when you walk out of a room, you're not literally diving into the pool. But it was very important that the client wanted to maintain that. We are tearing down the existing residence that's currently to, I guess you could say, on the upper left-hand portion of the property was where that existing residence. So it's really kinda creating this courtyard, and so the pool was integral, and so that allowed where the building was, which does keep at the 2/3 requirements also, and then keeping a one-story object in the front, which is where the garage and the guesthouse are. It's also come up with some discussions this week concerning the basement, and we knew we wouldn't put a basement under the main house, because you'd be digging down almost two separate levels to get down there. And so sticking the basement under that particular building was the first choice. Originally, the basement was just gonna be for storage, and then the applicant had asked for, saying that, okay, why don't we at least maybe put a gym down there? And then with the gym, after talking to the septic engineers, they said, well, let's just put a bathroom for approval. It may or may not be built as a bathroom, but that was just so we can get that approved. So then it was the question of the access. So there's various interpretations of the basement rules. We have before us this policy in 2015, talking about the basements in particular, when the rules were actually put forth, and some of the parts that go into a basement. And there's been a little bit of misnomer discussions on difference between a lightwell and a stairwell, and an egress and an exit and everything else. And so if you look at this exhibit, which is the part of the third part, which clearly shows a stairway on the outside going down to the finished floor level of the basement, that's allowing for egress. Now, it does define in here as an emergency egress. We set this up as the only egress, because we chose to use that basement primarily for people from the house to use it, so you wouldn't go through the guesthouse. And we feel that in the spirit of this code, and if you look at the elevation of that guesthouse, because that was clearly part of one of the reasons on the basement here, is don't create a third-story condition. So when you're in the door of the basement, entering into that gym, your elevation all the way to the top roof is less than 28 feet, so it does not create that. You can't see it from any neighbor. It's within five feet of the side yard setback, which is another requirement. So all intents and purposes, it meets exactly what this policy is. So all intents and purposes, it meets exactly what this policy is, and I guess the only default you could say isn't an emergency? Well, I guess it's the only way in there, so I guess you could say, yes, in an emergency, you have to get out of there, but you also got used it to get in there. So it's a technical point, but I don't think, if you look at the spirit of what the basement code is, we're not restricting anything, um, and we're not going against anything that's in here. It's not a light well, it happens to have a door with glass in it, so it's going to get natural light in there, so again, I look at it as the principal entrance into the basement from the side yard within five feet, and we feel that that particular location, um, should be allowed and kept part of the project. So I know that was something that was, needed some clarification, and we had talked to Mr. Mazza about that on Friday. So that was it. There was one other point that was brought up today, there's a small circle there to the top of the, um, drawing, and that is right there, that is actually a pump station for the septic system, it's underground. Technically where it's located, apparently it's been called out that this is maybe in a four to one slope. We talked to Larry Young, our engineer, and we can move that up a few feet and put it out of the, um, four to one slope, even though it's an object not above the ground, it's below the ground, because the last bit of plumbing has to go pump to that location and pump back to the tank above the ground. So that was also a point of clarification, that we can move that out of the four to one slope. So I know there's other questions, but we're here to answer that, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you as well. Uh, we also have Norm Haney as a speaker here.
Yes, Norm Haney, and, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the planning commission on this project. I think that, um, there were good reasons for, uh, making recommendations, uh, to the architect when this project was heard originally. I think that, uh, ninety-nine percent of those recommendations have been followed, and I'm in full support of the project. Also, you know, with regard to what is below the ground, uh, in terms of the pump station for the advanced wastewater treatment system, they, they have agreed to move it so that the structure is not on a two to ones, or a, uh, four to one slope. However, it was never on a four to one slope, it was below that, but if they're willing to move it, then I think that's, that's good. I, I think this project, especially the front yard setback, is just incredible. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's a long way, and I think it'll fit in, all you see from the frontage road is eighteen feet, one-story house, and I think that goes a long ways, uh, for the, uh, visual, uh, consistent with the neighborhood visual resources. Thank you very much.
Thank you as well. Uh, any other, anyone else wish to speak on this? I'll go ahead and close out the public hearing and bring it back here for discussion.
I'll just restate, so from last time I went out there, this, the front yard setback was an issue, and when I looked at the street, there was plenty of other buildings closer to the street, um, I didn't see it as an issue then, I certainly don't see it as an issue now. I, uh, I don't think it changes neighborhood character, I think neighborhood characters change by other previously approved things that were a little harder to understand, two-story guest house right near the street nearby and stuff like that. So I don't, I don't, I don't see the issue at all. I think this, uh, everything I've seen on this project, I think it fits the spirit and, and word of the code, and I'm in support.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, one item I wanted to bring up is there is landscaping in the landscaping plan on the four to one slope. And so it doesn't say so in the, uh, that I could find in the conditions, but he, it says you could, you don't, you have to have native plants inside of, uh, outside of a fifty-foot zone from the building, but it doesn't, there is no condition that says they may not be planted in what essentially is the issue, which is the four to one slope. So, and, and I don't know plants, uh, I had talked to Carlos about this, I don't know if those plants have been determined to be native or not.
The city biologist, uh, provided specific conditions of approval, not allowing, um, any non-native trees beyond fifty feet of the, of the residence. Now, that is, um, consistent with also the, um, requirements, uh, of fire department for the fuel modification plans. Those non-native trees are, uh, going to be planted just to the north of the, the decks, but then those steeper slopes are for slope stability and also with, for the irrigated zone, um, of the LA County Fire Department Fuel Modification Plan.
But, that's not my question. My question is fifty feet is fifty feet into the four to one slope. And four to one slopes are not allowed to be developed at all. So are the plants fifty feet towards the river or the gully native or not native?
Traditionally, we've allowed, um, non-native trees to be within, um, the steeper slopes in the Point Dume area. Um, again, this is to comply with the, uh, fire department requirements for non-native vegetation within the irrigated zones.
Can you, can you mention any property that's had that allowed?
If you, if you would like to, um, condition the project to, um, have the, any plants that are, um, installed on the four to one and steeper slopes be natives, we could, you can add that as a condition.
Okay, uh, now, I know this will be somewhat controversial, but, uh, the history, and I assume that Doug Burge showed an interpretation of the municipal code on basements, not the code itself. And the code itself says that the only entrance to a basement shall be a garage eighteen feet in width with two eighteen inches pillars. Period. No, no daylighting above more than three feet. Now, the staff later came along and said, oh gee, the fire department requires that you have a, a fire exit as a light well. So the, the staff said, well, because the fire department requires this, we're doing this interpretation, you have to allow light wells. Well, in this case, it isn't a second entrance required by the fire department, it's the only entrance, okay? So the light well is not covered by that policy. And a habitable area, this has got a, a bathroom in it. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, number one is a fire trap, and that's why the fire department requires two exits, if it's a basement. Uh, this requires an exit, uh, two exits, one from, I assume, inside and one from outside. But you can't have your only entrance be the exception to the rule by the fire department saying you have to have two exits when you only have one. And therefore, a light well, which is the way it's labeled on the plan, and the way it's designed, and the way the policy he read, is the only way in. So if you were strict on what the fire department requires, they require a four by three-inch, uh, hole in the ground with a ladder. That's their minimum. Uh, in this case, we're saying we're creating a building below ground, a basement, and the only way in is a light well. And the only way out is a light well. So as far as I'm concerned, they have to have two exits. They can't rely on a light well as the exit.
Um, Carlos did discuss this, uh, issue with Craig George, the building official. Um, Craig reviewed, his department reviewed the plans, and they were satisfied with it at, at this stage, um, with the, the, the egress, egress through the stairs, um, exterior to the building through this light well.
Okay, but how does that fit our policy? Our policy says you need a light well for your second exit, and we don't have a second exit.
Well, I mean, the, the policy is, is primarily aimed at accommodating the, the fire department's requirements, and also just addressing, um, when, if somebody wants to provide a light well, it, it has to stay within these parameters, so, uh, and not be visible, not daylight more than three feet, which is a visual impact issue. Um, and this, this one accomplishes that, in my opinion, and so that's why.
But, but my question is, my question is, light wells are required, the municipal code says you may not have another entrance. You have to have just the garage, it can only be eighteen feet to eighteen-inch columns. And then the staff came along and said, gee, the fire department requires a light well. Now, they've eliminated the other entrance. So how does that fit our policy saying you get a light well because the fire department said so? And why is that, and this is a question for Trevor, when the municipal code says, defines what a basement is, and sets, sets the parameters for that, can, can a, a, a building official just say, well, forget that, we'll do it our way?
It's the interpretation of, his interpretation of the code, right?
Well, the, the building official is interpreting the building code, and the planning director is interpreting the zoning code, so.
And, and.
And they overlap and occasionally, but, um, Craig isn't, he's not bound by the zoning code. I mean, he's not looking at the zoning code, we try to remain consistent and things like that, but he's, he, his, obviously his purview is over the building code, and how that gets applied.
Right, but my question of Trevor is, the building official follows the building code. The planning commission and the planning department follows the municipal code and the, and the ZPA, or the, uh,
LCP.
LIP, LCP, and nowhere in it says that a basement can be entered by a light well. In fact, it precludes it. So how do we approve something that's precluded by the law? Unless we have another entrance where the fire department says you have to have it because you need two entrances.
Uh, bear with me, I'm just looking at the definition of basement to see what is pertinent.
Yeah, because it will need to comply with both.
And, and maybe Doug, quick question, if you, well, she's looking, I mean, having, and again, I've looked at a bunch of houses. I've never been in a house where there's only a single entrance to a basement, and I don't think I'd want to be the person sitting in the basement if that house catch. Why wouldn't you have two entrances? Why wouldn't you have, doesn't that make it safer?
Yeah, it would make it safer, and again, just to answer the questions, it's the building and safety department's egress codes say how many exits you need out of any certain typical space, that's based on occupants, and that's why it was careful making sure that, you know, you're not, you know, using the whole thing for something, that's why designating part of it or half of it for storage, which is clearly what the client was doing. You, you know, just like anything exiting, that's like a second floor, you need to have a second stairway down to the ground from a stairway that's, second floor is more than three thousand square feet, so it's based on occupancy, use, and that type of thing. So in this particular case, it was by code, even to Craig's point, it's like it didn't, it doesn't require a second exit because of what its use is, and it's not a requirement by the fire department, so that's, that's the way it is. Yes, uh, it'd be great to have a second, but we, we can go down to a lot of projects that just have a stairway down to a basement that was never intention to have it as a habitable livable room, the base, the, the, the bathroom was put in there strictly for the use of the gym person, so, I mean, I'm not stopping anybody from going down there and staying down there, but that was never the intention, but you're.
It just seems to me that, that, you know, from a, and I'm not an architect, I'm not a builder, but from just looking at it from a safety perspective, it says, I, you know, I've got one way in and one way out.
Correct.
Uh, and, and it just, you know, seems to me if it was my house, I'd want to have another way in and another way out.
It was really by use, because it was more of just start out as storage, and let's put that stair down here.
But it isn't storage, it's, it's turned into a gym with a bathroom, and God knows what's going to go on.
Exactly.
So it just, you know, I mean, common sense from my side over here.
Just says, boy, you know, you should have another. Right, but then to John's point, then you could say, was that still a way, the right way down there, you could have a stairway on the outside and just a light well, that's not the primary reason to have a stair, but this, in this particular point, that's where we felt that with the intention of where the basement was set up in the stairs, that it is in the spirit of this basement code, so that's, that's why I'm only asking.
With the stairwell?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I'm concerned that there's only one way in, one way out.
Correct.
You know, and that seems to me to be, in this day and age, knowing what we know with all the.
Right, that's something that I can take up again with the client, and if we feel like that's another need, then we can certainly look at putting a light well in, so we could look at that.
But you as an architect don't think that's.
In this particular case, I don't, because of the basic size and the use and just knowing the client and other things, so, and you really.
If there's somebody down there.
Yeah.
You know, knowing the client, if the client's friends are down there, no.
You can get locked in a garage, and there might be a problem. We can all make up scenarios, but I understand, I, I got the point.
Did you find it, Bonnie?
Yeah, so, um, there's a, a definition of basement, and then there's, um, multiple computers, um, so, but first I want to read what the, um, the zoning code says about the standards for basement, it, this is in seventeen point four oh, point oh four oh. Um, it talks about that square footage of a basement shall be included in the TDSF, except for the first thousand square feet and all that stuff, and then it says, um, a basement shall be located beneath or partially beneath the first floor footprint of the structure above. Any portion of a basement, basement while extending beyond the first floor footprint shall be non-daylighting. All basements shall be limited to one floor area, not, not to exceed twelve feet in height. And then it talks about grading outside of the footprint should be included in the grading calculations, and, uh, also in the impermeable, um, calculations. Um, and then the definition of basement. Definition of basement is that portion of a building or an area enclosed by walls located beneath, located below finished grade and beneath or partially beneath the first floor above, where the vertical distance from finished grade to the bottom of the finished floor above is no more than three vertical feet at all points around the perimeter of all exterior walls, the basement does not constitute a story. And then it talks about basements on beachfront lots, so.
Well, it talks about the, uh, the entrance, uh, the garage entrance.
Uh, well, that's in the other part where, uh, under the separate, uh, standards for subterranean garage, it, it limits the amount of openings you can have.
Nowhere in the code does it say that you can have a walk-in basement.
It doesn't address.
It says, it says you may not daylight more than three feet.
That's right, and that's where there's.
That's pretty specific.
That's where there's some interpretation on my part, on staff's part, about, um, this, the stairway is, so there's, the stairs going down, um, into the light well, but the wall that, uh, holds up the cut slope is up at the same level as the top of the basement, so from that standpoint, it's not daylighting. It's not like three feet below the level of the basement, and that's, that's how I view it as non-daylighting.
But do you agree that municipal code says it can't daylight more than three feet? And your interpretation was because light wells were required as a second entrance?
That was the original driving force.
One entrance, so the light well, light well can't be an entrance.
Well, I mean, it's.
Says you can't, you can't do it.
It, it doesn't say, it doesn't address, other than vehicular access for a subterranean garage, it doesn't.
Well, it addresses it by saying no.
Call out access.
It, 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 it addresses it by saying no portion of the basement shall daylight more than three feet.
Right.
And then we came along with this fire department requirement that said, yeah, under certain circumstances, you got to put a light well in as a second entrance.
Right, in this case, in this case, it's a primary entrance. I, I feel like it still meets the spirit of that policy and the spirit of the, um, the code. I don't know what the other commissioners feel like, or if you want to.
Well, my question to Trevor is, if the city council, and I went through all these debates, and Jeffrey was probably on the city council, we had million meetings on it, and it was very specific. No, no, as Sharon Borowski said, I lived in the Midwest, I know what a basement is. And, and they were very specific about the three feet and no other entrances. The light well thing came up later.
Let me ask you a simple question, if, if the, so it's a door which is all glass is what's proposed, is that correct? So just to be clear, I mean, if we had a door that's, that's, say, six feet tall, half of it's glass, then problem solved? I mean, is that?
No, no, the problem's not solved. The code says you cannot have daylighting. And, and then we, we did an interpret.
Doesn't believe that there should be exterior access for.
You're going back to the old interpretation, that's not what was interpreted, Johnny, no doubt. You just have lost this battle every time.
No, no, I, you don't understand what I'm saying. The interpretation was caused by the fact that somebody brought up the fact that the fire department requires a second exit. up the fact that the fire department requires a second exit, a light well.
So if, in this case, if the applicant were to provide interior access?
Then he'd have two entrances and exits, they'd be fine.
And would that satisfy you?
But we're not, we're, we're sitting here setting a precedent that all you need is a light well. And that's just not what the code says. And, and I don't care, and what interpretation you can do, you can't change the municipal code without asking the city council to do it.
John, if they put a second stairway in, would that solve your problem?
That solves the problem.
Has to be an interior stairwell?
Yeah.
It'd be interior or exterior, I guess.
I think the issue then becomes the guest house, um, would be too big if it includes the entire basement, because the basement itself is.
It's still a basement. There's millions of basements that you can enter from inside of the house.
But a guest house, there's two different standards. A guest house is limited to nine hundred square feet, and has nothing to do with TDSF.
And it doesn't preclude the fact that a guest house can have a basement. If it does, we can't have this basement.
But you don't, you can't have a nine hundred square foot guest house and then a free one thousand square foot basement that goes with that guest house.
Where does it say in the code? You can't. It says any structure.
Because a guest house can't be more than nine hundred square feet. It doesn't, that standard doesn't care about TDSF.
So you're saying that the reason there's no inside stairwell is because if they put one in, it would, it, the basement now gets included in the size of the guest house?
Is that, I mean, I don't, I don't know what your reason for the design was, but the, the guest house is currently five hundred and sixty-three square feet, I believe, and then it's got a garage up there, and then the entire basement level underneath is like twelve hundred square feet. And so if you connect the, the guest house and the basement.
It'd become one. What if we connect to the garage?
They don't become one because you exclude the first thousand square feet of the basement. It's excluded.
That's, that's for TDSF calculations, not for telling you how big the basement, or the, uh, guest house is.
House can be bigger than it is. If you don't count it in TDSF, then how, how does?
It's, the, the, what, what, I think what Bonnie's saying is that the guest house is an independent, it's not a nine hundred TDSF standard, it's a nine hundred square foot max.
Okay, so we are now saying, if we vote for this, we're now saying that nobody ever in the future can have a guest house with a basement, uh, that's entered from the guest house.
If it exceeds nine hundred square feet, correct?
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
Yes, that's the rules for a guest house.
Where's the rule? I don't, the, I don't see where you count a basement as part of a house. You don't.
But if it's part of the guest house, then that would be part of the space of that guest house, not for TDSF, but for the unit itself?
Then a house is that way, too.
I'm just going to confirm what, how, how the square footage limit is written for.
And I guess another subtlety would be, what if that entrance comes from the garage, not from that house? I don't know if that would be a difference.
That, that's the whole purpose of the garage entrance, it's defined. A lot of basements are garages. A garage has one entrance, the garage. The fire, the reason for the interpretation was, the fire department came along and said supposedly that you can't have a garage with only one entrance, you got to have a light well.
One second, John, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I also participated in all of those hearings where we argued about what a basement was and what it wasn't. And I think the problem that, I, I don't know what happened to John in a formative period of his life when somebody scared him with a light well, but it's been a hobby horse that, that we've dealt with for many years now. The point is that when we were talking about garages, it was, it was almost entirely on two issues, and, and basements and garages, excuse me. One is how much of the development square footage of the basement should be charged against total development square footage. That was what we were talking about, because the idea was, well, if it's underground and you don't see it, who cares? That was the one argument. Then the argument came up, what, what about if you're building your garage into the side of the hillside, and you've got this, you've got this opening here? You can't have a, you can't have a basement that only has three foot openings on all four sides, because you couldn't get your car in there. So how do we deal with that? That's where the garage door element came from, because you knew the people were going to build garages, it was going to be on the lower floor, and all of that argument was entirely aesthetic. It was entirely, we don't want to see a, a, a garage front door, and then a bunch of windows on either side, which make it look like a three-story building. It was a purely aesthetic argument. That's where all of this stuff came from. And the idea that, that you couldn't have, you know, that, that somehow that city council had in its mind the idea that you couldn't have an, an entrance on one side that was completely blocked from view by the, by the local retaining, well, that's nonsense. The city council didn't have that in mind. All it was thinking about, when you, when you do this stuff, all you're thinking about is these visual images that staff gives you and that you conjure up out of your own mind. That's all that that city council was thinking about, that's all that city council talked about. They never, at any point, talked about light wells or, or any of the other access in, to or out of. It was all about the visual aspects of it. And, and you, so you can then try to parse the language of the code and say, well, you know, if it wasn't included, it must have been prohibited. But that's not what the city council had in mind, and that's not what the interpretation of the code is all about. So those are, those are my thoughts on it.
Well, I was at every one of those hearings, and not once, not one single city councilman ever mentioned the word light well, ever mentioned an, a, another entrance or exit, not once. Nobody thought about it when they passed a specific ordinance that was very specific, shall not daylight more than three feet. You cannot get more specific than that.
But this design doesn't, you can't see it, that's not daylighting. We, that was interpretation, we did it as a racist and spent a lot of time on.
This, you got what I, the question I asked Trevor is the same question. The city council never, so racists may have done something, some staff member may have done something, but the city council never changed their code, period.
So to follow code.
And it said, shall not daylight.
So, to follow code, the letter of the code, do we need an entrance on the inside? Could, could a second exterior entrance do?
The only reason for a light well, the interpretation of a light well was, you need a second entrance.
Okay, so we're saying.
And that's why the light well interpretation was made, because they claimed, I never looked it up, it's probably true, that the fire department said you had to. But when you only have one entrance, it's not a light well.
One second, John. So, so basically, what we're hearing, though, is that this project, the fire department is not requiring a section, second entrance. I mean, no, no one's saying the fire department's blocking this one, so.
It needs a primary entrance.
Which it has.
No, it doesn't, it's got a light well.
That, it acts as an entrance.
Can we agree to disagree and move on?
Yeah, I, I'm just not sure we've got much on this one for this particular project.
Okay, so you're now saying that any, any, uh, basement's got to be entered from the outside, because if it isn't, it's now, uh, precludes having a guest house. That makes no sense.
No, it would be if there's the guest house that joins that same basement, that combined area can't exceed nine hundred feet, as long as that's what you found, Bonnie, right?
Yeah, it says it cannot exceed nine hundred square feet of total enclosed area.
Which would then include a basement. So if we added an interior stairwell, which was accessible from the upstairs, joining the downstairs, we've exceeded guest house size. So either.
That's some kind of weird interpretation, as far as I'm concerned, but the, the basic gist is, we're, we've morphed from a definition by the city council into an interpretation about light wells being required because of fire departments, into the fact that they're now the only entrance. It makes no sense.
I, I do have it on my radar to bring forward for our city council to hopefully initiate an amendment to codify light wells one way or the other. So just.
But Trevor, can you answer this? If the city council passes them, uh, uh, if they say a house should be thirty, thirty-two feet, and the staff, uh, decides that maybe they should be thirty-six, can the staff do that, or does the city council have to go change it? Bonnie's contemplating having them change it, but they have not done it.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's your interpretation, is that, is that, uh, staff's interpretation is precluded by the city council's interpretation. I think Bonnie's, um, opinion is that it aligns, and it, 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 uh, meets the city council's interpretation. If you disagree, you can.
Let me ask you this, as an attorney, does the word shall not mean something?
Yes.
And does this say shall not?
Yes.
It says, it says shall not daylight, and daylight is not defined.
Chair?
All right, yes, sir.
No, from long experience, that this debate over light wells can go on for an extended period of time, I'd like to make a motion that we prove staff recommendation.
I will second.
I would like to make a friendly amendment that we include the pump station moving off of the non-development area.
Is that a? Uh, can we, can we, uh, do you mind clarifying exactly where that would be located to?
Well, uh, off of four.
Just off of four, four, it would not be located on a four to one slope.
Yes, it would be moved off of four to one slopes to something flatter.
I'll accept that.
Excellent. Did you accept that as the second?
I'll, I'll accept that also.
And, let me just ask one last que, so we, we have determined that there's no way you can put a second stairwell into the basement from inside the house. That does not work.
Can I, can I try that one first? So the way I'm reading this is that because this is a guest unit with a basement, you can't have them join to make larger than nine hundred square feet.
I'm not ar, I mean, again, I'm not looking at it from, I'm, I'm just from safety perspect, from whatever I know or don't know, okay? I mean, I look at this and say, a single entrance into a basement is risky. Now, how risky it is, I don't know, I'm not a builder, I'm not an architect. So, if we're my house, I'd like to have another entrance there, but if you can't have it, you can't have it. I'm just trying to confirm.
Well, then, you know, the other alternative is that the architect could incorporate a, a second light well.
Right.
To provide a secondary egress.
Right, and that would have to be exterior or become larger than nine hundred square feet, which is where my head was going also in this. So at least we have the safety issue, safety issue addressed, but I come back to, if fire is signing off on that, and they're, you know, they accept it as is, it's used, presumably, I mean, just to be clear, uh, Mr. Birch, Mr. Birch? Doug? One second, a favor if you could, just to confirm the, and the fire department review on this project, they signed off on the single access to the basement of the guest house, correct?
They're not reviewing access, water, uh, flow, and those types of things. They're not looking, the fire department does not look at that at this point. And it's a building and safety, the fire department, it's a building and safety code issue, it's a Craig issue, it's not a fire department issue.
Thank you.
It's exiting an egress.
Craig did sign off on that?
Yes.
Okay, wait, wait.
He just signed off, he decided the code. It will come up in building and safety. If they feel by occupancy that it's, uh, that it's, needs a second exit, it'll get a second exit. And if you're recommending that we have the option to put a light well in, we'll put a light well in, under the codes of the three feet and the light well and anything else.
Right, do we want to have that as an addition to the amendment?
We can, if you want to offer that, I can put it in, obviously, we're looking for an approval, but we, you know, we'd love to say that, if we need a second exit, we'll put one in. Okay?
So, would we, as, as far as our job goes, it's not necessarily the addition something that building and safety would decide on, so I'm assuming if building and safety says they need a light well, that will be added, and that would be adjusted for the plan. So, do we, I, I don't see that we need it.
It, it would, it would be a, a minor change. Um, they have.
Yeah, they have an additional, um, two hundred square feet of TDSF available.
Yeah.
Um, and staff will make sure that they're complying with the maximum allowed.
How much is the TDSF for the light well now?
Oh, I think the light well right now, it's about a hundred square feet, so it would be two hundred square feet total for two of them.
No, it's got to be ten by ten?
Um, if, if the second light well's required, the planning director could approve that as substantial conformance with the submitted plans, so long as it did not exceed the TDSF. That's allowed. Great, okay, so then we wouldn't need to come back here. So I don't think we need another amendment to that. So, can we get a roll call vote on existing, existing motion? And maybe Trevor, can you just repeat that again? It, it was staff's recommendation with the friendly amendment, um, that was proposed that the.
Pump station shall be relocated out of slopes of four to one and steeper.
And we're, we're okay with the native plant thing on four to one? Is that going to be taken care of, or do we need to make an amendment?
Are you proposing a friendly amendment?
If you want to, you, you would propose an amendment to the motion.
I'm proposing a friendly amendment that four to one slopes can only have native plants.
Is that, um, is that the LCP? Is it the, I know we weren't supposed to develop on, on four to one slopes, but is that, is it a requirement in the LCP?
If we consider development to include landscaping, then I think, yeah, that would prob, it would be included.
Okay, I'll accept it.
Great, Sue.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, and then Trevor, you can restate that part again? Okay, so the, uh, motion is staff's recommendation with, uh, two friendly amendments. The first is that the pump station be relocated on slopes that are flatter than four to one, and that, um, only native plants and vegetation be planted on slopes that are four to one or greater. Correct? That sounds correct, so.
Can I ask one last question?
Yeah.
When we were trained on, on amendments, there, we were trained there was no such thing as friendly or unfriendly. Is that something we want to put in, do we want to add the word friendly when it doesn't matter?
Uh, it, it's been a tradition of the planning commission to allow friendly amendments, it's not straight from Robert's rules.
Gotcha, thank you.
Let me explain it. If, if, if a friendly amendment is offered, and the maker of the motion accepts it, fine. If it's not accepted, then you vote on that amendment.
That's right, thank you.
Go ahead, Norm.
I, I've been involved in a lot of fire department's approvals and, uh, fuel modification zones, and they've made it very clear to me that you cannot plant native vegetation within zone A and zone B. Now, zone A and zone B, zone A is the first twenty feet around the house. Zone B is the next eighty feet, that's a hundred feet. Now, it is possible to reduce it down to fifty feet, but still, there's not any native vegetation that doesn't burn in a wildfire, and they will not allow it. If you put that condition on, it virtually, in my opinion, means you're not going to be able to plant anything there at all. But, that's up to you. I just thought I'd tell you what at least thirty-five years of working in Malibu tells me about fuel modification zones.
Thank you. Uh, Bonnie, or do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, I, I don't dispute Norm's experience. Um, I don't know the answer to that exactly, I don't know if we can, um, double check that with the fire department. I don't, it's obviously not my intention to get them stuck in a, a loop with the fire department.
I want you to remember that we have a condition in here that doesn't allow any non-natives fifty feet, so how can you have them eighty feet away? So, again, four to one slope is, is not supposed to be developed at all.
All right, so.
I'm sure they'll just plant something else anyway.
Let's just get a, let's get a vote on what we.
It has to be irrigated one way or the other, so that might address the fire department's concerns, I, I'm not sure.
I think that's what you just, I'm having a difficult time hearing you, but I think what you just said was leaving the issue of what gets planted on the four to one slope up to the fire department. Is that what I heard you say?
I, what I said was that, um, that area has to be irrigated anyway, as a requirement of the fire department, so I, I'm wondering if the fire department might allow it as long as it's irrigated.
Okay, so do we want to keep that amendment on or not? I'm just, uh, my sense is we don't want to have, we don't want to put something in place that could mess up fire requirements.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how we get out of it now.
Can you just condition it with fire department approval? If, if they don't, I mean, look, if the fire department's the, the guy with the stroke here, let's give them the stroke, the chance to make the decision.
You can make a friendly amendment to that, to that friendly amendment that would state that, um, if that would preclude any vegetation being located in that area per the fire department, that the condition would not apply.
Yes, it's, it's, it's as friendly amendments I could come up with, that's good.
Is that accepted by both?
I accept.
Is it accepted by both? Okay, we have a full motion. Thank you. Yeah, exactly. So, uh, all in favor? Hi. All right, carries. Oh, all opposed. Oh, you have opposed, okay. All right, so, uh, four to one, four to one, motion carries.
Move adjourned.
Any second?
I oppose, I think we should stay.
Motion carries.